Welcome, everybody, to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting tonight. We have a couple of our members that aren't here, everyone, I guess, who isn't here tonight, but we're going to carry on and we'll get things started. I have asked Commissioner Clayson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll go from there.
Please rise, repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So, we'll start tonight with a review of the minutes from our last meeting. Did everyone have a chance to review those, and are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? If there aren't any, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Our next item is a zone change, that is LNS Commercial Development Enhancement Overlay. And we'll, who's going to speak to this for the city? Very good. We'll have Brandon come and take care of that.
So, we've got Byron driving the presentation tonight, so we'll have him advance to the next slide. The previous slide was kind of a zoomed-out location, so you could orient yourself, we're looking just north of the River Bridge Event Center, this property highlighted here. This has come before you in the past to get some direction. The property is zoned commercially, and the applicant would like to develop the property. Let's go to the next slide. And what was previously proposed before was some relief to some of the required setbacks that are currently in the Spanish Fork City Code table as it relates to commercial adjacent to residentially zoned or used properties. There wasn't a lot of support, both with the DRC and the Planning Commission, making a citywide change to the table. There was more of a desire to go case-by-case basis, and so what we have tonight would potentially accomplish that, and so the applicant's looking to apply what we call the Development Enhancement Overlay to the property. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. And so the areas of concern that we previously talked about, and I'm always going to point my laser at this one instead of the one behind me, but we've got the north setback, which we're calling a side, and then we've got the east setback, which we're calling the rear. Generally, it would be 20 feet on the north. The applicant would like to propose 15, and 25 on the rear. How the building's oriented, though, it functions very much like a side yard, and so they're looking to go down to 10. So, what the Development Enhancement Overlay does is it gives the City Council and the Planning Commission some latitude to make modifications of that nature. It's not just two setbacks, it can be things associated with parking, or landscaping, or things of that nature. Usually, though, we want to identify what might be an impact if those reductions are made, and so previously, we've discussed, the code does require a six-foot masonry wall, and trees every 30 feet as a buffer, and so one of the things that could be done would be potentially to reduce that to maybe 20 feet or so, and so if we go to the next slide, the applicant provided this, which I appreciate. So, once again, we've got the building here, we've got a shared access off of Main, parking here, and so we're looking at this area and this area here. You can see, it's kind of hard to make out, but we do have a restaurant-type use on the end facing Main Street, which would have some outdoor seating, and then in the center, we have the main two-story component to the building. Let's go to the next slide, please. These are the latest elevations we've received from the applicant, so once again, where you're seeing the outdoor seating, this is Main, this is the north side of the building, so it'd be facing to the residential property to the north. And one thing that a few members did stress is a hope that there was some attention paid to the back wall, so it wasn't just CMU, or an entire wall of stucco, and so we appreciate the renderings here that show what can be accomplished. And the reason, I think, why everybody, just recapping previous discussions, I think why many seem comfortable with the case-by-case basis is the idea that where the property's on Main Street to the north, it most likely will, at some point in the future, redevelop from its current use, which is a single-family residence, whether that's commercially or something else, we'll wait to see. Let's go to the next slide, please. So, once again, this is showing the interior layout of the building. Main Street is on this end, this is looking south to the parking lot. One thing that was important, that we appreciate that they paid attention to, was a presence onto Main Street, and so you can see there's some attention, some penetration with the windows and the roofline and whatnot, we appreciate that. Let's go to the next slide, this is the central part of the building, let's go to the next one. And so the recommendation that we received from the Development Review Committee was to approve the application of the overlay to allow for those reduced setbacks. They appreciate the hard work that the Planning Commission does, and pushed it onto your plate to maybe finally articulate for the City Council what the expectations might be. So, I don't think there was, this is just my opinion in recapping the conversations, I don't think there was a desire to go above a six-foot wall. I think many felt six feet would be appropriate, instead of an eight-foot as part of the buffer. The enhanced landscaping, if you want with your motion, you can very specifically say, instead of a tree every 30 feet, maybe it's a tree every 20 feet, or something that you feel helps mitigate the commercial use going into the existing use to the north. Any questions up to this point?
One thing about the landscaping, was there any details, I didn't look specifically in the parking areas?
Yes, and so we do require, as far as our parking regulations, every 10 stalls, you have a landscaped island with a tree. You usually end up having a certain tree count that's required for the site, and the trees in the parking lot can count towards that. As so, just a reminder, as far as next steps, any action taken by the Council, they would still need to go through a full site plan review, but what we're hoping to do is give them direction so that when they make the application, there's no, there's no lack of clarity, or there's no surprise as far as what the expectations might be. And so, we are hoping for any specific requirements you'd like, as it relates to that potential reduction. Any other questions for staff? We do have the applicant here tonight.
I have a question. One is, so the only changes, the only that they would like to make for the Enhancement Overlay is only the setbacks to the back and the rear?
So, the north, yes, the east, yes, and then there is an anticipation, this was a question I had for the applicant, an anticipation of in the future potentially adding additional parking here, but in the meantime, the main focus, as you've stated, is here and here.
Okay, can I borrow one of your pointers?
Yes, ma'am. Why is the talk about the wall, is it just because it's required when a commercial use abuts a residential use?
Yeah, as part of a transition buffer, so the code currently requires the wall, and then a landscape buffer, which has to include trees every 30 feet, and so that's the minimum expectation.
Okay, and then my other question is, what is the feedback of the owners on this side, the resident owners on this side and this side?
So, the applicant's previously shared with us that this is a rental home, that's owned by the owner of the Event Center property. This is the Hanks residence, and I don't recall the property owner's name to the north. Right here. We'll let him speak his own thoughts.
Are they planning on doing, is there any pushback on the wall and the tree every 30 feet on the boundary?
No, what the applicant's provided is a reduced spacing already, and so I think they're comfortable with the potential idea that...
So, it really is, they're planning on complying with everything except for 25 to 10, 25 to 20 on the north?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, at our previous discussions, we kind of touched briefly on building elevations, making it attractive.
What would the rear setback be if the use to the rear was a commercial use?
The rear, if it was a commercial?
Where the house is now?
Which?
On the east side.
Zero, unless there's an easement.
Could you go back to the rear elevation again? Are there doors out that back that access that area behind the back, where there'll be the 15-foot setback?
Yes, so, this is the north elevation, there'd be a central door, and there'd be a sidewalk, and then on the side of the restaurant, there would also be expanded concrete, so you could accommodate the seating as well.
Okay, when we talk to the, do you know what they plan on doing with that strip of ground back there? If it's going to be grass, if it's going to be landscaped in some way?
It'll be landscaped, I think we'll let them...
Yeah, so, we've got the trees, what else goes back there? I mean, is it just going to be an urban forest, or is it going to, or will there be something else along that strip? That's a pretty significant strip of ground there, that will just sit there, there probably won't be a lot of access unless it's on the, on that end.
That's the whole crux of the discussion, is land is valuable, and so if there could be a reduced setback, so that they can still accomplish the purpose of the transition buffer, but in a reduced area.
I guess my concern is, is that that not become just an area that would collect trash and other stuff, and so when the applicant comes up, we can ask about that, and find out about that. Just a question for now.
And assuming this fixes, because they're going to do shared driveway with River Bridge, right, and so this fixes the parking issue, right, so you have enough parking?
And that is the only access to this property, is through that area right there, then?
Yes, so, Main Street is controlled by UDOT as far as access, and spacing, and locations, and so I believe it was contemplated when the Event Center was built, that this would be a shared access.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, can I maybe just add a couple of thoughts?
Absolutely.
Not that Mr. Snyder missed anything, I think he hit all of the important things, but we're talking about a five-foot setback reduction on one side, and depending on how we look at it, maybe as much as a 10-foot setback reduction on another side.
But it was 15.
15, so you hear that, 25 instead of 10, 15. In one respect, I think you could say that's not a significant deviation from the typical standards that ordinance requires. Nonetheless, there is a bar that needs to be met to have this particular zoning tool used, and Title 15 describes findings that need to be met in order to have the Development Enhancement Overlay approved. I believe those conditions, or those findings can be met, I'd like to just touch on them briefly. So, four things, I think particularly the first three are applicable here. First of all, and I'll just read how the code reads, "City findings, City Council may approve an application for the Development Enhancement Overlay with conditions as outlined in this." So, first of all, that the proposed use is an appropriate use on the specific parcel as compared with other possible uses. The current zoning is commercial too, the applicant would be able to use the property consistent with the uses that are presently allowed, no change. I think it's easy to check that box, so to speak, and to say that that finding has been met. The next one, that granting the Development Enhancement Overlay with modified restrictions will not cause a detriment to prospective patrons, adjacent property owners, nor to traffic flows on the adjacent public streets. Whether the setback reduction is granted or not, the point of access on Main Street will remain the same, there will be traffic generated by the site, whether it's the same amount, or something different, those impacts will not change. But more importantly, I think that when we get into the third one, that adequate conditions have been incorporated into the zone, which will offset the easing of usual requirements. So, by way of the rights that property owners have, and because we do not have design criteria for buildings that are constructed in this zoning district, or a commercial-two zone, there's no need to provide, for example, any enhanced architecture on either the north, or particularly the east-facing elevations of this building. One of the things that we've discussed is, as something of a way to mitigate, the idea that largely on the north side, the setback would go from 20 feet down to 15, that that building elevation shouldn't just be a solid cinder block wall, which oftentimes, back at house-wise, with buildings that have been constructed in recent years in Spanish Fork, is the case. So, I appreciate that as one step to justify that that finding has been satisfied, the applicants are proposing, I think, four-sided architecture here, which, again, is always nice, it's not required, I think that absolutely is a great upgrade, and helps us note that that condition, or rather, that finding is satisfied. And also, we've talked about the idea, maybe to some of the things that you were talking about, chairman, men and all, the need to perhaps enhance the landscaping in that corridor as well. Mr. Snyder mentioned that we require trees every 30 feet, certain types of trees, as a way to soften, you know, that space that exists between different uses. In this case, the applicants are proposing to do greater plantings of trees, and shrubs, and that type of a thing, so even with less space, the idea is that it's being used more effectively, as a screen buffer transition, however we want to put it, and, again, where particularly, I think those are the three findings that come into play here. I think it's, so, just my opinion, but I do believe those have been satisfied, and that this proposal qualifies for consideration, if that's what the City Council would like to do.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion for staff before, I'd like to invite, I'd first like to invite the applicant up to speak to this, and give us any information that you'd like to give, and then we will ask for other.
Shay Nelson.
Yes, she hill.
I don't think we have anything else to add, I think we've worked tirelessly for the last five months to try to get this to where we're at.
The question you had, I think, of the space between the building and the buffer of the, you know, landscape and the wall, that would be concrete or asphalt, and essentially an alleyway, so it would be clean and kept, no tumbleweeds or anything like that.
Who would be responsible to see that that's cleaned?
So, we'll have staff that does that, most definitely. These businesses are going to be high-end, so that building's going to have to stay kept.
Another question that I have for you is that, in the plan, with the only access being in the parking lot now, there is, there is access to the road on the east, is that Southfield Road?
So...
Will that be?
South Lane.
Yeah, onto Main Street on the west, and on the east, it goes out to, is that South Lane?
Yeah.
Now, that, that access to South Lane is changed quite often, and I would imagine that's a really good thing for your business.
Yeah.
You know, will that remain blocked most of the time?
Yeah.
Or will it be able, or will patrons from these businesses be able to exit that way?
Her access there through River Bridge, that is always barricaded, she doesn't use that for through access, so it's like her staff parking, she doesn't, she doesn't allow kind of through traffic there, so that will be that UDOT-recorded access that we share, that will be our only in and out.
So, all of these?
Talking right here?
No, he's talking right here.
Yeah, so, River Bridge parking, because our parking lots will align, and she has a pull-through to South Lane.
Is this a private drive?
No, that's, well...
River Bridge.
For the vision, for the business.
But we will become...
This property does not, do you have a shared access easement back here, or no?
Yes, yeah.
So, why is it blocked?
Well, she blocks it off just for her events, so it could be open, but, you know, she can kind of regulate that, it's for her reception events, so that's to her discretion.
There's a fair amount of parking stalls here, that will all necessitate going out the same direction, so if you have an event here, and all of these with only one access, you know, ingress and egress, that's a lot, that's a lot of cars.
It's true, but...
Or could be, if these are all being out.
And that's the benefit of the shared parking agreement with River Bridge.
Yeah, we have that agreement between the two of us, with both businesses, but also that UDOT widens, it's not just that access it has now, it will widen.
Okay.
So, that will help.
And your agreement with her now is that you have shared access both ways, so that when they need overflow...
We have a contact base to work together, it will benefit both of us, yeah.
Okay.
The one, the business I was wondering about, if it'll cause problems, is your restaurant on the end, because I'm guessing that they would be open during River Bridge events?
So, some will, yeah, she's mostly weekends, obviously, Fridays, Saturdays, we will have some overlapping hours, but the remaining six businesses there will be closing probably by five, so that will help as well.
Yeah, I agree.
Do you have tenants for all of the spaces here now?
We have, we, I think so, not all, but I think we're about there.
Okay.
We have a lot of interest, commercial property in Spanish Fork is really hard to come by.
Yeah.
Good.
I've been trying for two years.
Is there anything else you guys would like us to know?
I don't think so, unless there's any other questions.
Any more questions for the applicants?
My, I just have a comment, thank you for the beautiful elevations, it's so nice to have that.
Hey, thank you, that's our architect, we kind of gave him our vision, and he's done it, so we wanted it to be a beautiful building.
That's wonderful.
I think it's going in across from, you know, the rec center and all that development, so, it should be a draw.
It's two women designing it, it will be a beautiful building.
So, I have, and then...
I've flown Spanish Fork girls, too, so...
That's great, so I have two other items. One is, we saw the landscape, can we see the landscape slide? There we go, so, so what you told John is that this will be an alleyway, and there won't be the landscaping, or is it just that there won't be grass?
It'll be the six-foot wall, and the, like, the park strip of landscape, and then it'll have just a little alleyway, which that would either be concrete or asphalt for in-between, we're not just going to have a dirt strip in between the sidewalk way and the park strip.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And the east side will have a wall as well, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then can we also see the backside elevation? Oh, yeah, right there. So, that's, so it's really beautiful here and here, and I'm wondering about these two, I mean, I'm guessing it's just more expensive to improve those?
They'll be brick-to-stone, we'll pick our texture, but, yeah, they'll, I mean...
It won't be corrugated metal.
No, and it won't, no painted, you know, slab-on, yeah, nothing like that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? This is not a public hearing, however, oh, it is. Okay, I thought it might, should have been.
I'm anxious for the public hearing, I'd like to hear the public's...
Yes, we'd like to hear the public's comments to this, and so now we'll go into public hearing, and we'd invite anybody to come up that would like to speak to the Commission tonight, and ask specific questions, we'll invite you to come up, we'll ask you to hold your comments to about three minutes, or your questions, and if you need a little bit more time, we'll think about that. If you have something that just repeats a question that's already been made, we, you know, we've already heard that, so, anyway, we'll invite whoever would like to come up and speak on this proposal, to come forward now.
Should be, it's a zone change, right?
Anybody here that would like to, sure, state your name, and probably where you live in...
How are you guys doing today?
Can't you tell, we're great.
Good, I'm excited to be here. Okay, my name's Chandler Godfrey, I'm the resident on the north side.
Perfect.
This is you.
So, and if I understand right, from what I've heard, they're asking to reduce that setback, right, on the north side, and then also on the east side?
Yes.
So, I'm only referring to the north side, the east side doesn't impact me whatsoever. After conversation with my wife, and talking to other people, to see how it'd impact our property value and what's going on, we, I would ask that the city maintains the standard of what we're doing now with the 25-foot setback, and the standard height wall. We're excited that they're doing it, there's nothing against that, it's going to be pretty, I think it's going to add to the public, and add a lot of value to the city, but how it impacts us, where we live, we just don't want to be really close to a commercial building, and so for that purpose, we would prefer that we just follow what the standard guidelines are of the city currently. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll go out of public hearing. Is there anyone from the staff that would like to speak to the concern of a resident?
Just to clarify, the expectation currently is a six-foot wall, and I believe that's what's proposed. We didn't, as staff, we didn't necessarily feel that going to an eight-foot wall would address it better than a six-foot would, and so what you have here is opinions from both sides of the discussion item, and so that's kind of why we outlay the argument and presentation in the way that we did, so that you can think that over and make a recommendation to the City Council.
The current zone to the property to the north is RO. Is that a part of the Mixed Use General Plan, in the Mixed Use General Plan umbrella, or no?
I don't think so.
Is it just commercial and high-density residential, or is RO contemplated as an appropriate zone within the Mixed Use designation of the general plan?
I'd say RO and the CO are two of the, the most closely aligned zones with kind of a mixed use.
So, RO is an appropriate zoning designation?
Conceivably in an RO, so project, you could have both resident... Probably have the residential by right, so that the owner...
By right, somebody with property zoned, RO, could do single-family homes on 6,000-square-foot lots, or develop a project like this one, straight commercial, without any special approvals from the city, or a number of different options that somebody would have.
Okay, great. Any other comments? I have a question for the person who spoke, if you'd come up for just a second, I'd like to ask you a question. I think I understand exactly why you speak about this like that, I would be concerned about the visual look of this building as well. I guess the question I have for you is that, with the trees and the other stuff that you will be seeing over the six-foot wall, and with the presentation that they've got on that backside, do you think that that 10 feet that will be lost is that big of a, an impact on...
I think they're asking for five, I think it was a different, different on the other side, and that, again, I'm not referring, that's not up to me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we do, we're, just the way we look at it, the height of the building, a little bit of distance makes a big difference of how much you see of that building, and how it impacts us. They're obviously already building around us like crazy, and that is, it is what it is. Everyone has the provocative to build and do what they want with their land, and we support that 100%. I would just encourage the Council to, for us, just to follow the rules that have already been set by the city, for the codes that we have, I assume those regulations that they come up with, they didn't just make up, they brought them up because they were good ideas to begin with, so that would be our stance, what we would request, but that's a decision you guys have to make. So, and I can understand where they're coming from, I can see why they want more parking, different things, I get it, we're just viewing as a homeowner that's lived there, and how it impacts us, it's not something that we want really close. Now, are we against them building it? By no means, it's their land, they have that right, but we would ask that the city follows the rules that are in place right now.
I think that we are interested in your comments and things like that, and that's why I ask about that.
Yeah, and I appreciate you taking that.
What the distance is between your house and the wall on the buildings... What the distance is between your house and the wall and the buildings.
Uh, I haven't measured it out. If I was the guest, the, the distance of our house from the property line is probably around fifty feet.
Okay.
So, but I haven't, haven't measured it out.
Well, I think that we all, when we have a neighbor that builds, we're concerned about what that's going to look like.
And, and I, I asked, um, the other neighbor, he was gonna be here today. Turned out to be his birthday and his family wanted to do something fun, so he didn't make it. But he, he just said as well, he's like, you know, it sets a precedence of how we do things around here. And he goes, I would just really like to see it followed. Now again, that's his words. He's not here to represent himself. So take that for what it's worth, but, um, so there you go.
Okay, anybody else wants to address him?
Any other public comments?
Any other public comments? Seeing none, we're out of public hearing. And is, are there any other discussions or questions from the commission or from staff? Seeing none, I would, uh, entertain a motion.
This isn't easy.
I'm gonna throw one out there. I'm gonna throw out a motion. I move the planning commission recommends approval of the zone change subject to compliance with the regulations as they are along the north boundary without an exception for the setback, yet allowing for the variance on the east side as proposed and having their plans be consistent with the plans as presented, as the, as substantial conformance with the plans as presented. Subject to, also subject to staff's findings and conditions otherwise. That's my motion.
That's how I feel about it.
Complicated.
Do you got, complicated? You wanna walk it through it?
It's a comp- no, I know.
Okay.
So you're good. You just don't wanna do the five feet on the, on the back?
No, I don't. If there's a, there's a property owner here that is against it and there's not a great reason to grant it, in my opinion. Uh, the property is large and there's a significant variance on the east side and that property owner is not against that variance. And to me, it's, I feel like our job is to mitigate the property rights of each property owner. And for me, the variance was very contingent upon the neighbors not being against it. Because I don't see a hardship or a, a real need necessarily for it, although I am in favor of it. I'm in favor of the businesses. I'm in favor of them going there. And had the property been zoned commercial to the north, which it is not, and had it been zoned something other, something other than what fits in the current general plan designation, I would have been in favor of the variance. But R O fits in the actual general plan designation, which is mixed use, which I agree with. And that's why I lean where I lean. And you, you don't have to agree with me, but it's, that's where.
No, I get what you're saying. Cause I think, if, maybe we can go back and remind me, the main reason we're doing that is because they weren't gonna have enough parking, so that gets enough parking. Am I crazy?
Will.
Okay.
Will it impact the park, parking if we do not approve that variance?
There are a lot of ways that the site could be redesigned to meet the setback. For example, five feet of building depth could be eliminated.
Well, and I was thinking for them, potentially they have significant parking here to their point. If there's a restaurant here, that's gonna be heavy in the evenings and heavy over here in the evenings. But these are more businesses that are probably not necess- not necessarily open in the evenings, as an example. Then there'd be plenty of parking even if they eliminated an entire row right here, potentially. But that's not for me to say. It doesn't change my opinion. I hope they can work it out. But it looks like they might have room.
Smaller building or less parking would be how you'd comply. Be one of those two. And just so we can keep track of things over here, there's a motion. So a second.
There, there's a motion on the table.
I'm used to getting ghosted.
Good.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
It looks like the motion failed.
Seeing that there is no second, the motion dies.
I'm, I'm just so, I'm so halfway about it. I think it's good to have the setbacks the way they are, but I can see why it would be fine to give the variance. And it, I feel like five feet's not gonna make it, like, like I totally respect your opinion on that, but I don't think that the five feet is gonna make a big difference for your, for the impact of your view on your property. That's just me.
Yeah, I agree with Shawna. Five feet, I think, has a minimal impact on the property behind, but it could have a significant impact on the building and the parking situation.
Personal opinion.
My other, the other thing too is, am I right in remembering that this, the own, this is a rental and the owner is the owner of River Bridge?
Yes.
So I think that, I think that's why I'm fine with that being only a five foot setback. Otherwise I would be like.
It's also.
But that's your, you've worked that out.
It's zone commercial as well.
She may, she may develop it. She may sell it. We may buy it.
Um, yeah, okay.
We need the comments from the crowd to come up to the microphone.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I, I guess that one of the questions, the reason I ask the, the, uh, remind me of your name again.
Chandler.
Chandler. Mr. Chandler, uh, is that, uh, being a homeowner, I have a neighbor who, who erected a, a six foot fence, a vinyl fence recently. I hate it, but he has every right to do it. And if he moved that fence five foot further away from me, it would make zero difference to me because he's blocking a view that I have of the valley, whether it's there at, you know, it's about, uh, it's probably thirty feet from my, uh, house, from my deck, that I enjoy my view out of. That was up to him and he built it. I objected to it. And he likes his six foot fence. He's got a couple of dogs and I appreciate that he keeps these dogs in his yard. But nonetheless, I don't, I, I just don't see where five feet, uh, would make any difference in, in, for me at my house. And so that was the reason that I asked that question is, uh, I, you know, I don't know that it's gonna make that much difference.
A- and I understand that. And, and you know, the truth be told is I haven't seen it yet. I haven't lived there. I haven't seen the type of noise it brings in, right? By also moving that building five feet farther away, also pushes the cars five feet farther away and the noise and all those things. I, I don't know exactly the implication of how this is all gonna play out. Might be totally fine. But how I feel, this gentleman said it exactly perfect. I personally, we don't want it, okay? I'm not asking to change anything that's not in the, uh, current guidelines and standards of the city now. But because we don't want it, I would just request the city does stand up for the property owners and say, hey, these are the codes that we have today. We, I assume that these gentlemen that came up with these codes didn't just one day invent them. I'm sure they put a lot of thought into that process. And for that reason, I would ask you to stand up for me, for that, those purposes. Now, I'm not asking them to do anything that they're not required to do currently in the, in the guidelines. Not saying, hey, let's change this or do this for me. If that's how they wanna do it, they're up, I, I commend them. I'm excited. I hope their businesses do awesome. It's gonna happen. It probably will be a gorgeous, gorgeous thing that will add to the whole community and I'm excited about it. I really am. Although, I would just ask the city stands up for what we would like and just follow the guidelines that are in place. He said it honestly perfect. I wish I could have said it that way, but I can't.
He's good at it. Nobody can say it quite like he says it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, and, and again, and to me, and I, I, I'm not a planning guy, right? It's not what I do for a living. I look at it and to me, I see, it looks like for the business they're gonna have, I see plenty of parking as is with the two parking lots. Am I wrong on that? I very well could be. Does it add, is property expensive and does that help them? I can understand why they would be asking. I'd be doing the same thing if I was in their shoes. And they easily could be doing the same thing I'm doing if they're in my shoes. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
So the city does allow for enhancement overlays? And Dave walked us through the requirements and that this request does meet the requirements laid out by the city, correct?
Yes.
I just wanted to add, after the last planning commission, you had asked if we had reached out to him. So I did the very next day and went and had a conversation with him. And the conversation I had with him is completely different than what he's, which we're allowed to change our mind. When I asked him if my, if our building was five feet or twenty feet from a fence, he said he would not care which, how far it was. We'd offered to rezone his property commercial and pay for it. Um, he's been in Spanish Fork, I believe, for six years now and has no intentions of staying here. This all comes down to about his property value, which I would think hi- his, he's talked about putting residential. I know that I would never buy a lot right there on Main Street in Spanish Fork and I don't think anybody else would. But I wanted to put that in, that we did reach out to him, had a conversation. We respect that. He's not a long-term residence like Lacey and I are. We respect that. We don't wanna push people out. We, we understand that, but he, he has thirty acres somewhere else. He has no intentions of staying here, so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I think, uh, we need some discussion before we ask for another motion.
I would say whatever happens, I do like the plans. So if you do make a motion, my suggestion is that they would comply in substantial conformance with the plans as presented. You know, you guys decide on what your motion is with the setbacks, but I think that the plans as presented are important because they're single story where they should be and two-story where they, where it kinda makes sense um, to actually also protect the neighbors, in my opinion. But that's what I'd say.
Uh, as I look at the plan and the elevations, I think that, uh, as far as a commercial building goes, there, they've, they've, uh, done very well in their design and how it looks. Uh, and, uh, for the reasons that I've already said, I, I don't see the, the great need for another five feet to be there. And, uh, with what Dave already read, uh, uh, as, as we talked about, Michelle mentioned it, that they have complied in all three things that, uh, it takes to have an overlay, uh, exception for some things. This doesn't seem like a big ask for me since it's, since it's, uh, commercial anyway and because it, the building itself will not change. If the concern is noise, uh, the building will actually, since there's nothing on that side that will be making noise, that would add, uh, really mitigate any kind of noise that's on the south side of the building and may even help the noise that is emanating from the businesses already there because it's blocking you a little bit. Uh, so, uh, uh, my preference would be to go ahead and accept it uh, as it has been presented to us at this time. I am very, uh, I, the big, the big thing for me, as I talk about that, is exactly what you were discussing is, is that property rights are property rights. You have every right to be here and you have a right to be heard and, uh, you have a good argument. But, uh, we have one property owner and another property owner. Somewhere we have to come and try to, uh, come to a, uh, a conclusion that is beneficial for all. And I don't see that this proposal harms your property, uh, to the point of changing things to the degree that it affects how much parking is there. If parking is, becomes a premium here and we start lining cars up in front of your property on Main Street to try and accommodate this business or even on South, on South, uh, Field Road, then we have a bigger problem than, than visual problems. So I, I would, uh, I would suggest that, uh, it be approved as it has been presented, but, uh, I need a motion.
I think the other thing too is that, the thing I, that makes me feel comfortable with this is I've seen the cars lining the road like all of you have been during some big events at River Bridge and this will help with that parking along Main Street. It's so nice that you're working together and that you want to bring a business, uh, uh, that is aesthetically pleasing and filling a need in our city. I also appreciate that the side that goes, um, that borders our residence is going to have, is a beautiful side. It actually, like you said, it, it will block, um, it'll block some of the sound and that it'll have trees there to also help with that. Um, so I think, I mean, I guess the only thing that would make it that there might be some noise is if it comes from the restaurant. But then an owner can call, I mean, you can work together. So I, I don't see it being an impact on a property value at all. As a matter of fact, I, it could probably help a property value with something nice next door.
There you go.
Alright.
Is it you, Michelle?
Are you ready for a motion?
I'm ready.
Alright. I move that the proposed zone change be recommended for approval, uh, based on the listed finding and conditions and that, um, the design plan presented, uh, with the elevations remain the same. Joseph, help me out.
Yeah, substantial conformance with the plans as, as proposed.
With substantial conformance of the plan, with the plans as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes.
I'm opposed.
Oh.
Yeah, just one nay. I'm one nay.
One nay.
For the reasons I stated, just the one issue.
Very good. Okay.
Motion passes.
Motion passed.
So this will go to the city council, um, at their next meeting.
Okay, we will go to item number five on the agenda, uh, the preliminary plat and zone change for River Run Town Homes Expanded. Brandon, are you presenting on this as well?
I'd be happy to.
Great.
Um, we appreciate, uh, Matt and Tyler being here tonight. I think they should be familiar faces to you. They've come back a number of times to, uh, work on getting the best project moving forward as possible. Um, so we appreciate, uh, them being here. We're not too far from the last application. Um, this is just to the north uh, of the existing River Run Town Homes that have been constructed. Let's go to the next slide, please. Um, what we are looking to do is take the, uh, what's known as the Peterson property. They bought it from the Peterson family that's highlighted here. And they're looking to expand the River Run Town Homes, uh, residential project. Let's go to the next slide. And so as you can see, um, orientation wise, uh, here's Main Street, here's South Lane. We're just looking at this property here. We're now jumping over. Here's River Run. Um, here's Annie's Acres just off the screen. So we're looking at property that would, uh, be added on to the existing R three. Um, and then it would stretch to River Bottoms Lane. Um, just as a flashback, this is the original, uh, River Run Town Home.
River Bottoms Lane, Lane, River Bottoms Road or South Lane?
River Bottoms Road, sorry. Did I say River Bottoms Lane?
Said River Bottoms Lane.
Alright, my bad. Um. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. Okay, this is, uh, this is River Run as it was previously approved. So we're mainly looking north of Volunteer Drive. So if you can picture in your mind, we have the new road connection off, oh, off of Main Street that comes through here. Um, Phase one has already been constructed, uh, Phase two is under construction. And so what the applicant's looking to do is modify what was previously approved for Phase three and four um, and then add the Peterson property to it. So let's go to the next slide. Uh, this is their latest and greatest plan. Um, so once again, here's Volunteer Drive. Uh, Main Street is just off the screen to the left. Uh, Fairgrounds are to the north. Um, so what you can see is they've introduced a, a new product type. Um, so in addition to the townhomes, we've got condos proposed. Um, and what they currently have in this area would be a hundred and eighty-eight additional, uh, residential units as part of the R three, uh, zone. And this is an area, this is important. I appreciated our city manager, uh, referencing this, uh, aspect in the, in the mornings DRC. This is an area that is already general planned for this type of density. It's a high-density, uh, residential designation. And so, uh, what they're proposing would be consistent with the general plan. There are a few things, as it's a master plan development, to achieve this type of housing product that we would appreciate your direction, um, on as. housing product that we would appreciate your direction on as we make the recommendation to the City Council. One of those is, is parking. As the property is laid out, it currently complies with the minimum number of parking stalls required as well as proximity of guest parking spaces, which we measure at two-hundred feet. A discussion topic this morning was just sensitivity to making sure that there was adequate parking adjacent to all of the uses and not necessarily putting them too far away, that it's an inconvenience. And so there was lengthy discussion at that. Ultimately, the DRC did recommend that the plan be approved with the conditions in the staff report. So that's something that we would love to get your input on as you look at the overall layout and design. Let's go to the next slide, please. This I pieced together, so please blame me, not the applicant, if it's off a little bit. I did my best to snip multiple pages together and align them. This is the landscaping plan, so this will kind of highlight some of the amenities in the project. So on the previous slide, we did see that earlier River Run had a condo, or excuse me, a clubhouse, and as Matt, as, as the applicant, Matt Loveland, has presented a number of times to you, the proposal would move it further north and I make it more central to the entire development as a whole, and so we'll highlight that there. We do have the Central Park with some playground amenities, and then as you can tell, there's been quite a lot of thought put into the landscaping, the street trees, and the road connectivity as was previously, previously discussed, excuse me. Let's jump to the next slide. This is imagery that was provided for the clubhouse. Let's go to the next slide, and the pool that would be adjacent to it. This is what would be replacing the clubhouse to the south, and so the parking layout is the same. This east side, I believe, is largely the same, or excuse me, the west side. It's the east side, so in, in moving the clubhouse to the north, we're replacing it with some other outdoor amenities for the residents there. Pickleball courts, as you can see. Let's go to the next slide. Now we're getting into the building elevations. This is one of the renderings that was provided for the condominium units, so these are all three-story. Let's go to the next slide. This is a slightly modified version, and what we appreciate is that they would provide kind of a layout as to what color schemes and product types would be used where. Let's go to the next slide. One thing that we would like your input on is we are sensitive to end elevations, especially when they're visible from the, the public right-of-way. Next slide as well. So these are the two product types for the condominium units, the apartment units, excuse me. And so I think there might be some little things that they can do to enhance those. If we go to the next slide, as you can recall, we had this conversation with the applicant on their townhome product, and we appreciate them making some slight modifications to beautify the ends as well. Let's go to the next slide. This is another townhome product. Feel free to interrupt if you have questions. Oh, I didn't realize we were that, that far done. So just to recap, the applicant's looking for a zone change to the R3 to accommodate the master plan development expansion. That would include the Peterson property. We do have some red lines that we're working through. As I mentioned, we just received some recent, recent middles, some revised plans as far as the landscaping and, and civil goes. Just a few things that we did touch on with the DRC that they would love you to give some thought, thought to and some direction. Along River Bottoms Road, we do have a trail and felt it would be appropriate to have some sort of delineation between the public space and the private space. Two ideas were kicked around with the applicant, one being a split rail fence, the other being a three-foot wrought iron, if I recall correctly.
DRC was okay with the three-foot wrought iron fence, is that correct?
Yes, or, or the split rail.
There's, where's, there's a trail along River Bottoms right there?
Right here.
Planned.
Planned.
Oh.
Suckers.
Okay, like not right?
Yeah, so we're looking just this stretch. The west buffer will have a masonry wall, and then the other elevations would not have any fencing. We just discussed as far as the introduction of the trail to the front of the units, and we appreciate that the units are facing to River Bottoms. It'll be a lovely, lovely elevation. And then the applicant did, if we go back a slide, actually I don't have it, but the applicant did respond to your previous discussions as far as phasing, and so the next phase, if the project's approved by the council, would be these two buildings here, and then the subsequent phase would include the clubhouse. There was a strong desire to get some more amenities in place for the residents, and we appreciate the applicant making those modifications. I apologize, I'm just looking at my notes real fast to see if there's anything.
Phase independently complies with the R3 as developed, correct? Parking requirements and amenity requirements?
We can pull that up.
I would just, you don't need to, I just, I know you would check. I would just want you to make sure that they do, just because that would be the city standard.
Yes, and so when we do look at the phasing with the applicant, we anticipate things like that, but we also anticipate ease of access, turnarounds, things of that sort. And so there, there is, I appreciate that reminder. I don't have anything else in my notes. Is there any questions of staff at this time, or are we happy to hear from the applicants?
Could you go back to the elevation?
Yes.
The elevations and take a look, was it the side elevations that?
Yes.
Only have the windows and flat?
So if you go, sorry, wrong direction. So pause right here, oh, go back. So these are the front elevations that would be facing the street.
Yes.
Appreciate the attention to the design and the detail they've given, and then the next slide. These are what I have, I don't know if these are still the current design.
These are the end, these are the ends.
Yeah, so these are the ends, and so it would be appropriate to discuss maybe on high-visibility ends, whether it's material changes, those would probably be easier than popouts. The next elevation already has some popouts, and so you could, let's go to the next slide, please. So for instance, you could easily change the, the material on the popout, things like that that would add interest to the end.
I think another thing that can help there is vegetation that would be planted, a couple of trees or something that will break that up.
Uh, let's go to the landscape plan real fast.
There are some that are close to the buildings and.
Yeah.
We had those on the ends, it would, I would imagine that that would help.
So for instance, this row of three here, you do have some landscaping and tree, street trees on both ends. Probably wouldn't hurt to do a bit to touch up the elevations as well, but that obviously wouldn't be as important, for instance, for the central building or this central building.
That's right.
But here you could have a.
There would be another place, yes. As a matter of fact, both of those buildings.
Here and there.
So we.
Ends.
We currently have it as one of the red lines for the applicant, and so if you feel so inclined to make a motion to approve it, you're more than welcome to articulate that as a specific condition, or we can address it as an existing red line, which is one of the conditions.
Very good.
I'm wondering what the, this is all parking right here?
Yes.
Is that right? And then, but around here, I guess they do have parking, guest parking, but this, this back row doesn't seem to have.
No.
And these don't have a lot of guest parking access, but then there's a lot of parking here. What's the, what's the reasoning on that? Oh.
Sorry.
These don't have their own garage.
Uh, they actually do. I appreciate you bringing that up, that's a good point. Oh, sorry. So all of the apartments do have garages on the, on the first floor.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
And then the reason there's what appears to be less parking stalls here is because each of these units have a twenty-foot two-car driveway as well, whereas these are accessed off of a shared alleyway, and so hence the reason for the interspersed parking that you see.
Right.
Throughout the project. But the code does allow where you provide a two-car garage with two spaces on a driveway, there's no additional required parking.
I live near a community that that's a big problem.
And I'm, I'm guessing it relates to the way that they utilize their garages, yeah.
Yeah, because, yeah.
I think it depends on the length of the driveway. Because I live, I live near a community, it's the Salisbury Town Homes.
Yeah.
Where the driveways are actually long enough for two cars, and it's actually really drivable, unlike the one by.
Somerset Village is.
Maple Mountain High School.
Yeah.
Yes.
That one, that some of the driveways, their cars are literally like in the road, that's disaster, but.
Right.
Yeah, there's a difference, for sure.
I agree.
Yeah. Do we know how long these driveways are?
Are you talking on the plans? Some are twenty-one, and I believe the longer one is twenty-six?
No less than twenty.
Less than twenty.
Yeah.
It's good. Should be good.
Very good.
Twenty to the sidewalk.
Yes, and then there's a large plank of domes.
It should be good, but at Somerset Village it's not. So I just, that's my biggest concern is not having the, I mean, available parking over here. And I actually listened, I wasn't at the last planning commission meeting, but I just finished listening to it before this meeting, and I appreciated that you had one-car garages for your, for those apartments or condos? Condos?
Per se.
Yeah. Yeah.
It did provide, but it's not in, in this presentation today, it was based on an earlier design layout. Our current city code does not give, I can't think of the appropriate word, but the on-street parking is, is a bonus. It doesn't go towards meeting the minimum requirement, but as you can see, with as many public streets as they're providing with the connections that they are, there will be ample on-street parking.
Oh, there will, okay. Because in the other community, there's no zero, you're busted if you park.
So just highlighting, if you recall, this was a.
Yeah, it's really pretty. It's really pretty, yeah.
This was a public connection that they made at your request. This is a public street, and then at the DRC's insistence, this is a public street that connects to another public street, and so there's a robust network of public streets.
So on-street parking is allowed, then I'm fine with that. Tell me about why the big parking lot here, is that just to help you have all the parking that is required?
Those are apartments.
Only one?
Oh, apartment.
Three, three-story condos.
Oh, okay.
Name and serial number again.
Matthew Loveland. I represent Keystone Homes and White Horse Developers. So the parking there is because it's going to be a future power easement. That is the big reason behind that.
A future power easement?
Correct.
Is that what you said? Okay.
Yes, and so there's limitations, obviously, with what can be built there long-term. And then some of the other just design principles that, that we, that we have to keep in mind, where condos have to front a public right-of-way, there, there's, that, that's where we opted to make sure that there was plenty of parking for the community, at least in that off-street fashion, so.
Great.
Hope that answers the question. And I have plenty more, but I don't want to.
You're more than welcome to share as much as you want.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we hear from the applicant?
That's fair, you can cut me off, I can ramble sometimes.
He never does.
So a, as Brandy mentioned, we actually purchased this property from the previous developer, and there is a preliminary plat currently approved there, we've talked about that previously. Since we acquired River Run, we also contracted the Peterson property. We were looking at it, we didn't love the barrack style, if you will, and we just saw the opportunity for something better, right, which is why we're here today. So the current preliminary plat has a hundred and eighty-eight units. Keep in mind, there's really seventy, ninety units? Eighty? There's a bunch that are already there, if you will, right, from a preliminary plat perspective. We do have the zoning on the R3, which, but that also accommodates this better design than what, you know, the alternative would be. So a couple of things that we have changed that I just do want to point out. So as mentioned, we put in this public right-of-way at the request. We've added this public right-of-way at request. We added additional parking for the units along Volunteer Drive at request. We've also put in the, the clubhouse, this will be, Brandon did say that this is the next phase, but we are actually looking at, this entire portion will be the next true phase. These are just, they already have the improvements done, so we're doing a tiny little plat to start those units, but bottom line, that clubhouse will be built, well, started as soon as I can get an approval. And so immediately is the, is the important point. And then talking about the, I, I think one of the other really big changes, there's been a lot of discussion around obtainable housing, where we're at today, and previous design was just condos and that kind of barrack, or sorry, townhomes and that barrack-style layout. We have a much more attractive design, at least in my opinion, and we're also offering to Spanish Fork additional housing types beyond just a townhome, right? So all in all, we're, we're really excited about where we're going in this. It's been kind of a fluid process, and staff's been great to work with and helping us advise on how to get there, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I would also like to ask for the opportunity to speak, both following public comment and then also at the request of any commentary that comes up from the commission's discussion, so.
Quick question, two and three, two and three-bedroom units in this, or they all three?
Three and four bedroom units. So the condos are three unit, are three bedrooms.
Okay.
And then the townhomes, depending on the, the floor plan within those, are three and four-bedroom.
Very good.
So.
Thank you. Okay, and we will have you respond to any of the, any of the other things that may come up in the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff from? Nothing? Okay. We'll move forward then and go into public hearing, this is a public hearing, on the zone change and the enhancement, or the expanded proposal. So we are now in public hearing. We invite again anyone that has anything to say about this proposed development to come forward and state your name and where you live, and we'll hear anything that you've got.
Hi, Diane Garcia, and my farm is just right down the road from this, so I just have three things to keep in mind. One is being able to have all the big horse trailers navigate through this. I have set out many times during Fiesta Days and the big rigs come, and then they're like, oh, we're down this little tiny road, we don't know how to get out of here. They've turned into Annie's Acres and had to do a thirty-two-point turn to get back out. So, so something to, to keep in mind because they get to the back parking of the fairgrounds, and there's no parking, like it's all filled up, and then they come down that little road and they, you know, and, you know, and then they're trying to hurry to get back so they can compete, and so something to think about that people do get directed down that way that, that have big rigs that, that can't navigate those small little roads. Second is there's drainage ditches that go through this area that drain water off of my property, and so I need those to keep draining the water, otherwise we will just have a big lake out there. And so that's very, very important for me. And then the third thing is keeping the lights down because I do have fields of fireflies, and the light pollution will kill off the fireflies. So we do need to keep the lights down. I know you guys have been good before and got into code about the street lights, but as far as the actual lights on the buildings, if we can make it so that they're not shining out and they're just shining down, makes a huge difference, and it's also a good selling point for people to buy a condo or a townhome just down the street by fireflies. So anyway, those were my three things that, that I've noticed and that I'm concerned about.
Thank you.
I have more than three questions, because that's who I am as a person. My name's Jackie. What happens if I give you guys a different name other than my name? Are you gonna just stop me, or?
We may.
Cool. So what is the plan for River Bottoms Road? Like, is it gonna expand? What's gonna be the impact from this? What are the changes gonna be? We keep seeing river bottoms. Is this not lower than the river? Is this considered river bottoms? Does this have any flood? Does this have any flood potential or anything with that? Um, that ditch through the center. Whose ditch is it? 'Cause I, from, the city's plans say that it's strawberry. Then the storm pond number one. It's going to be on the north end of it. Sorry, I'm going ahead of your map, you're trying to look at something. Um, so that storm pond number one, it's on the top end of this development and I think it's on the other property. That's not these guys' property. How are those two going to connect? And where's that going to drain? Another question is, was it delineated? As Diane mentioned, that surface water and the drains down from off the hill. Um, what's the plan for the water? Has it been approved? And the, the ground's wet. You can't cultivate, if you can look at it, you, they didn't farm a good chunk of it between, like, the River Bottoms Road and then west. And if you follow that up, the same thing was kind of, I'm assuming the purpose why the fairgrounds aren't filled in completely towards where it's filled in, that ditch and then the River Bottoms Road. So I mean, my opinion, I don't think that his, changing the historical flow of the water is something they could do without asking for permission. Um, what's the plan with, are they gonna put it in a storm drain? Have they got permission for it? Couple other things that I add on there, landscaping plans. What's the proximity of the trees and shrubs to the canal? Um, the pool? Is it gonna be self-filling? Um, why, or if you can't have basements here, can somebody explain why they're gonna put a pool here? And he said affordable housing. I'm curious what these are gonna be priced as and if there's gonna be any deed restrictions on that. That's all my questions. Thanks.
That wasn't bad, Jackie.
Great questions. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no other comments, we'll go out of public hearing and address those things that were, uh, brought up. Uh, we can start with, uh, Diane Garcia's, uh, concerns about traffic on, uh, River Bottoms Road. That's already an issue, isn't it? Uh, and having those trucks there has been an issue ever since the, uh, parking has been available on the east side of the river, or east side of the, uh, of the fairgrounds. And so, uh, that's an issue.
Is this the fairgrounds right here?
Yes. It isn't. The city owns it, but it's not, it is just back, back culture.
You said you, you sold it, you sold that area?
The city acquired that property from this project.
And probably a good idea for the additional parking because the Fiesta Days and other large events there, our parking is limited there. So, uh, I'm not sure how we address the large trucks that go down there. Yeah, it's, it's a hard thing unless we were to sign it or something like that and offer them a way to get out of there, but when you turn on to Southfield Road, that is a very sharp turn. And it's, you know, uh, a little road that goes from the corner there by Ms. Garcia's. Uh, that's not a good turn for a large truck either. But, uh, I'm not sure, th- those problems already exist. And, uh, they're caused by, by, uh, the activities at the fairgrounds, not, uh, from this development. You know, this development won't have much impact on that, on the large trucks. Uh, anything from the staff on that?
Yeah, if you recall previous conversations, um, and I'll pick on Matt briefly, that was one thing they did not want to have happen with the straight north-south road that the city, um, desires. Um, and so in a way, there will be a more direct route coming down the street, connecting to the, uh, lovely improvements that were made to Volunteer Drive. Another thing that's, the city is currently working on, if we go back to the air photo, the project is tying into some utilities that come, uh, down this UDOT, uh, lane as well. But the city in the future is working with UDOT to extend the street that's gonna be here, um, and connect it, another option to Main Street as well as Volunteer. And then to the south, there is already the connection to South, uh, South Lane, um, and over to River Bottoms that way. So I, I think in a nutshell, this, this development is, in my opinion, improving some of those traffic issues that you're already seeing with the, uh, fairgrounds.
Okay. Uh, another thing, uh, that she had, uh, was, uh, the drainage in this area, and there is a significant, uh, it, there, there is what, uh, is probably best described as a ditch or a canal that, uh, you may not be aware that, uh, it was actually used as an overflow or another ma- means of getting water on down into the mill race at one time. It's a place where if there was too much water, they could take it down there and it actually goes down and into the mill race, you know, near where we have the, uh, road coming in from Second East. So that is there, and I would imagine that, uh, we have talked to, it's not just drainage, it is a possible use by, uh, the River Bottoms, uh, well, by the mill race.
Mill race, yeah.
So I suppose that, uh, uh, the canal companies that are in the area and those in the mill race, Spanish Fork is one of the, one of the owners in the mill race, anyway.
Yeah, we, we own and maintain it actually as a city. The irrigation company doesn't claim the, the mill race overflow. Um, and we've actually been working long-term, so actually Annie, Annie's Acres, as they develop, they'll pipe it and eventually it will go in the storm water, storm drain and go south to the river. And so the overflow will actually overflow to the river.
And we'll, what about this development? Is that going to hook into Annie's Acres and then flow south?
So as it, 'cause it comes more like southeast from the mill race and that's where the overflow is. So Annie's Acres will capture it before it gets in here, um, and take care of it and take it into the storm water. Short-term, they would do the same, they would pipe it into their storm drain and then run it down. Now our storm water runs down west on Volunteer and then south to the river. So we're capturing it that way.
Okay, so it's not going all the way south, directly south, it's going to Volunteer and then.
Yeah, it goes west and then, west-south, yeah.
All right.
You need to speak in the mic, please?
So I guess if you pipe that, where's the water gonna co- go that comes down off the hill?
We'll have to capture it in, like, inlets, just similar to roadway water and capture it in there and get it into the storm water. The, the mill race through this property is already piped.
Right.
Yeah, so there's, it's not an open ditch that's taking.
Other ditch that goes to the center there, that.
Yeah.
The water that comes off of that hill on the north is all captured in the pipeline that was put in some years ago that runs down.
Yeah.
River Bottoms Road. There's boxes that take care of that.
Correct.
It's, but there, it is really wet through some of that Peterson property. And I don't think it all comes from that drainage. Uh, and then a question that I have that was brought up by, uh, Ms. Garcia is, uh, her drainage crosses across the road and comes over near Annie's Acres. So is it presently going, uh, to the river across Volunteer Drive now? Or where's it going? Is it going in the ditch that goes underneath?
So there's actually two. So, um, do I have to hold this, or? Okay, so, oh, go up just a little bit more. Okay, so right here between Myleene Hales and me, we have a ditch. And water drains off here, water drains off here to here, water drains off here to here, water drains off here to here. So it goes along this open ditch here and then it goes in a pipe under the road. And then it's in a pipe for a little while, and then I'm not sure where it goes after that because it's on someone else's property and I've never done. Then also, if you go up a little bit more. Nope, the other way, sorry. Okay, then, right through here, there is another open ditch and it goes under the road and it goes right along here and it, I think it joins that other one.
That's that over.
So there's two, so it drains off of this guy's property, drains off Jamie Powers and it drains off Myleene's as well. It just pulls it in a different direction, so it's like two, two drainage lines pull from all those properties. And, and it's, it's a lot of water. It's a lot of water. There's natural springs all through there and it's a lot of water, so.
So of, uh, the water issues, the grant, the, not just the surface water, but any springs or groundwater, have they all been addressed as part of this development?
So yes, we, we have, uh, done extensive geotech work and groundwater will not be an issue for the development. Um, and some of this predates actually Byron in his current role, so if I can just add to what he said. Uh, both the city, Annie's Acres and our group spent about six hundred thousand dollars increasing the storm drain size in Volunteer from an eighteen-inch pipe to over a five-foot pipe, I think, at four and a half? Big pipe. And it's collecting all that water. So, or will, that is the plan, long-term. So they, a lot of it is already, though, not flowing in there yet because development hasn't gotten to that point. There, there's already been quite a bit done, uh, over the past, you know, probably year and a half or so, leading up to this. So, planning for it.
Okay. So you feel like that's enough capacity for the water that may develop there?
We do, yes.
And you did that with an engineering study?
Oh, yeah, I don't speak for that stuff. We pay the best, so.
I wanted to make sure of that.
Yeah, and that, that was extensive review, uh, with the city as well before Volunteer was paved, so.
And then have you, have you already been aware of the dark sky lights?
Oh, yeah, huge proponent of it. I think everyone should do it. So, we're on board.
Wonderful.
Very good.
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, uh, Jackie had some, uh, concerns as well, some of them are the same, the drainage. Uh, the, the first thing she asked was, is this part of the River Bottoms plan? And I believe it is not.
South Lane is the divider. So this is the other, the west, southwest side of South Lane. Am I, is that right?
At this point in time.
South Lane's the divi- the borderline.
And we also had a question about the pool construction. If we have a problem with groundwater there, how are we gonna keep the pool in the ground and not have it float up on the surface?
I, I'm not an expert, but you, you piqued my interest. I actually built a pool in Syracuse, uh, that was twelve feet deep at the deepest point. And this is like literally in the Great Salt Lake. And we came across this issue. Here, this is what I learned from that situation. If a pool can keep water in it, it sure can keep water out of it. I don't know how they do it beyond that, but it can be done. So that's all I can add to it, unfortunately.
And it can be done, but, uh, as a plumbing contractor, I've seen, uh, septic tanks that were put in but not have any water in them float out of the ground before they got the water in them.
Yeah.
So, uh, it is possible, if it's too wet, it can float anything up out of the ground. Pipes are the same way, you know, if we know that there's water there, we have to take certain precautions that they don't float out of the ground if they're not going to be full.
Absolutely. We, we share that, so we, uh, and that, that's, again, I'm not the expert in this, but I know that our team has had some conversations around, how do we go put a pool in this type of environment?
Is it gonna be twelve feet deep?
It is not going to be twelve feet deep, so that's why I feel more confident it can be done.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the public or from, uh, the commission?
She asked the loaded question, it was what do affordable housing mean? We're not gonna cross that one, right? That's a question we.
Open to debate.
Yes.
What do you anticipate as your selling price for these units? That's a fair question.
It is a fair question. So the, the townhomes, we are currently selling these and we are in the low four hundreds. Uh, depending on the floor plan, four oh five to four fifteen, it's kind of the range, going back to that three- and four-bedroom interior versus end. Um, so low four hundreds. The, the condos, this is what I'm really excited about, w- uh, will be priced somewhere between two ninety and three twenty for those. So, um, obtainable, I think, is the word that we need to focus on. And those definitely, in my opinion, at least fit the bill.
What made you decide to do three and four bedrooms instead of two and three?
Uh, so it's a changing landscape that we're in. Um, if we backtrack ten years, uh, townhomes weren't discussed at the level they are now. Same with condominiums, it was small lot, single-family, right? And the, the world is changing. And so, but family sizes aren't necessarily, right? So we, we have always been, uh, this, this is in part the market, but then also Keystone. Um, we don't wanna just do the bare minimum, lean and mean, kind of, you know, hit a price and go. Like, we actually wanna build a superior product. And we did a lot of competition shopping of, and, and lots of great builders in Spanish Fork. I'm not trying to dog on any of them. But, uh, looking at what was available and then also what wasn't there, we felt like having that, you know, kinda that larger segment in that townhome product series, that's where we wanted it to be. So that's where we gravitated immediately, just, we're gonna make these things bigger than we probably have to. But that's who we are and that's what we're gonna do, so.
Thank you.
I'd make the comment that I appreciate you guys listening to some of the concerns we've had in the past and responding to them. Uh, it's a good thing and I hope that you'll continue to do that, you know, with some of the things we've talked about tonight, such as, you know, improving the, the looks of things on the ends and things like that, uh, that hopefully don't add too much, uh, cost to your project, but make a big difference in, in the way that they look.
Which I do wanna talk about the end units, if that's okay. So, keeping in mind the obtainable housing aspect, frankly, we can do whatever we want, but it comes at a cost, right? So, I mean, i- this is a total loaded question, so don't run away with it, is my ask, because we've done a lot of great things together. But, I mean, give me some recommendations. Pop-outs are going to be a significant cost and that's gonna just go right to the homeowner with frankly, very little re- residual. So are we just talking about some exterior accents with, 'cause right now, these are shown, I'll admit, as, uh, stucco. Um, do, are we just talking about some varying, uh, exterior uses to comply with that? Or, like, 'cause I, I'm not opposed to it, but I also just wanna make sure we.
There was one view that we had where it looked like you just had a full roof line that, that went along that end.
Yeah, that's.
I'm not sure where it's at, tha- that one.
Uh-huh.
That's not a pop-out, that's just, that's just a little bit of an accent.
And that one is a pop-out. That's actually our ADU unit to meet.
So it does, that is.
FHA requirements, uh, for, um, for the, uh, I forget all the federal stuff you have to comply with, but you have to have handicap-accessible units and that one is to accommodate that, so.
Just something that can break up the, the monotony of the flatness.
Yep.
You know, stucco and, and the same-sized windows and the same, in the same, uh, plane, uh, to me looks institutional rather than something that I like looking at. Your other, your front and rear designs look great.
Yep.
And, uh, I just think a little bit of, uh, changes there. You know, you see shutters, sometimes you see other things. And like I said, you know, if, if there could be a little, some mature trees that go in there, not, you know, obviously not twenty-foot trees, but something that breaks that up, it makes a lot of difference.
I, I actually appreciated your comment on the landscaping, 'cause it, what it spurred for me is, we could go put stone on the bottom of this, but then these trees are gonna hide it all, so what did we just do?
Yeah.
And so, like, and that's just something I hadn't thought about in that context yet. So, um, one thing, and I don't wanna be the one that picks, 'cause I'm not the designer, I'm the land guy, not the, uh, interior designer. So let me draw on our professionals and we'll, as we come back, uh, obviously to city council and working with staff in the coming days prior to that, um, we, we'll, we'll definitely propose a couple of product boards, if you will, of some alternatives that could work. One thing to keep in mind is though this is a, a flat plain, you are also looking at the additional material type behind it because it is a break. So it's not just a square you're looking at. You still get it, the enjoyment of the shed. You still get the enjoyment of the shed roofs that come off, and so, you know. But I hear it loud and clear, spice this up a little bit.
Maybe the cheapest thing you could do is to throw in a couple of more mature trees.
Yeah, which, I mean-
And I don't know how the rest of the commissioners and the staff think about that, but-
I like the stone, but doesn't like that. Wrapping the bottom part with stone.
If you do wrap the bottom with stone, then the additional trees aren't necessary. That is just an option.
Yeah.
So, just something that, and you'd have to pencil that out and see if that could work.
And I appreciate the feedback, and again, I can't picture what that is, because I'm not that guy. However, I'll take this feedback back to my team, and we will definitely coordinate directly with Brandon and Dave on trying to figure out how to give those a little bit more detail.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, Matt, we won't expect it on every end.
Yes.
It'll just be the highly visible. And so we can even work with you to identify which ones we particularly have in mind.
Which, let me just ask this. So, if, does this elevation feel enhanced because it does have that popout? Because we could strategically put these, this unit type on that side of the building. That way you're getting that break, because there's two sides to every building, right? If you will, and so-
It's a good start. It's not enough if that was, if that's what I'm looking at like that. Maybe the popout is the hardy board, or differentiate a little bit more, but it's a good start.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because marrying a building, I mean, my architects hate it, because it's a whole new building, but not saying it can't be done, so.
Just as a general comment, thank you for looking at this land and this development to change it from the barrack style other part of that development. That was not my favorite, so thank you for reimagining that and making a great addition to our community.
Well, this isn't Matt Loveland's first draft, so this is a we rendition at this point, so I can't take all the credit.
Great. Any other discussion?
I like how they added the road we talked about last time. I think that'll make a big difference.
Very much. That's very good addition, both roads that go both directions, north and east. We're out of public hearing, so if there, is there any more discussion from the commission or from staff? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
All right, I move that we recommend adoption of the preliminary plat and zone change for the river-run townhomes expanded to the City Council.
Very good.
Subject to staff's finding and conditions.
With spicing up the end caps.
Second.
We've got a motion? Do we have a second?
He was second, already.
I seconded.
Oh, you seconded?
Yes, sir.
Joseph seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're good. That passes. Thank you very much. We now go to Title 15 amendments, which is another public hearing. And are you handling that as well, Brandon, or are we?
This one's me.
Hey, Mary.
Mary.
Thanks.
Glad to have you.
So this is a proposal to make some amendments to Title 15 regarding entertainment uses. The applicant originally requested that entertainment uses be allowed in the light industrial zone. And we took that proposal and adopted it a little bit based on research and recommendations from DRC. So we looked into what other cities practice and also what we already had in the code. So we have an outdoor commercial recreation facility. So we're proposing kind of the opposite definition of that for an indoor commercial recreation facility. And then where we currently allow entertainment uses, we are taking that out and replacing it with this indoor commercial recreation. So that will be in the downtown commercial zone, the general commercial, and also the shopping center zone. And then in the light industrial zone, we've added that as a conditional use in order to minimize impacts that conflicting uses may have with each other.
And this came to be because of someone wanting to-
Correct, yes. Yes. And then we also looked at parking and researched what other cities practice and other indoor recreational facilities throughout the state and what's required of them. And the most common requirement was between one stall per 200 square feet and one per 300 square feet. That was the most common. And DRC this morning discussed several options for parking for indoor playgrounds, which is the use that's most like what the applicant is proposing or pursuing. And we found that one stall per 250 square feet would be most appropriate for that use. And then also included in looking at parking, we've just made some general cleanups with other uses that were already existing. So the applicant is looking at building a, it's called a kid's topia, kind of like an indoor playground for young children, currently in a 17,000-square-foot facility roughly. So we did look at the different ranges that would result from different parking requirements, and again, found that one per 250 square feet would be most appropriate for the indoor commercial recreation facilities. Are there any questions?
I did the reading. Good job on this one.
Awesome.
I did not see where it includes theaters or anything like that. Is that more of a commercial use rather than recreation?
So that would likely be outside of this definition of the indoor recreational facilities, more like indoor sports and pool halls, trampoline parks, kind of like the hive down the road.
Theaters, you sit. You don't recreate.
You don't recreate, you vegetate. I am surprised, though, Joseph, that you didn't ask about a golf facility.
I know.
I won't mention it by name, but-
Vineyard, got it.
All right, any?
Too close. We're too close to Vineyard now.
It's true.
It's going to be tough.
Any other discussion or questions that we have for staff? We're out of public hearing. Well, we haven't gone into public hearing. Oh, if we have the applicant here, let's have the applicant come up and speak to what we're looking at.
Hi.
Let's have your name.
Yeah, I'm Jessie Lee. She's the owner.
Okay, I'm the owner. My name is Yang Yang.
Very good.
I'm Greg Kleikis.
Great.
So, okay. So this morning, we came to the, I can't see the planning?
DRC.
A DRC, yeah, sorry. Yeah. So the thing, it's really caught us like off guard, because when we were submitting the-
The plan.
The plan, and it was 1 to 350, so that's what we prepared. And then when we came to the meeting, like, you know, it just shows like, it tells us like 1 to 250. So of course, we are like 20 stalls, like a parking stalls difference. So we just want to-
Like, the committee requested the plan, you know, basically a parking plan, at a 1 to 350 ratio. So we went to the builder and had the builder's architect put that together, and then we submitted it, and then that's when, you know, we expected to review that, and that's when it came back at 250.
Yeah. So we just want to, of course, I'm pretty sure, you know, Mary did a good job in doing the research and about like, you know, how many square feet. But the thing is, most of those facilities, they are in the commercial zone, and they, you know, they have to fight the parking with restaurants around them. But this one is in the light industrial zone, so we don't have that problems. And so, you know, I feel like the 1 to 250, according to her research, is kind of a little bit aggressive, you know, to this space. And another thing we want to talk is the busy time. The particular busy time is after school, that's, you know, after four, and also the holidays and also the weekends. And that's, you know, in the light industrial zone, in those facilities, they are all basically empty. So we have, you know, plenty of parking there. And also on the, you know, even during the day, they are open, but it's like only less than 10 cars. Because no one, you know, the kids are in school, and no one is going to go to the, you know, to play, right? So usually, it's, I feel like, you know, the parking we need for the facility, for the kid's topia, it's just opposite, kind of like off the time, off time from the other businesses. So we won't have the issue, like, you know, fighting over the parking. And for the summertime, you know, maybe you say, oh, like for summertime, what about everyone is after school, and we can just, you know, it's getting so busy. But actually, summertime is their slowest time. Yeah, because there's a lot of like a-
People are outside.
Yeah, so people go outside, go on vacation, and yeah.
No one will be more negatively affected by a lack of parking than them.
True.
The other one's asking for it.
Yeah.
And also, like, what we saw that is like, for the trampoline park, they have one parking for the 300 square feet. But for us, we don't have a trampoline park, and our business hour is, right now I have two locations, one is in the Bluffdale, one is in the Roy. Bluffdale, exactly like what we're going to have in Spanish Fork, like the, or the warehouse, we like the high ceiling. And like Roy one, we are in the Business Plaza, and we don't have a high ceiling. So it's kind of, for the kids, it's bored. And why I said we don't have a trampoline park, like a trampoline park is a business hour, it's much longer than us. And the trampoline park is more for the older teenagers. Okay, my youngest son is 13 years old, and for kid's topia, for my playground, he is not interested anymore. Because for him, it's more trampoline park is like the light during the nighttime, hang out with the friends, and you know, after 15 years old, they can get a permit, they can drive by themselves. They have to drive by themselves, maybe go hang out with someone. And for my park, it's all the like, the young parents with the little one, under maybe 12. And my second son is 10 years old, is still interested. So sometimes it's, I like to see the customer drive the Mini Win, because they have a lot of kids in one car. So this is, I mean, in the Bluffdale location, we have 9,000 square feet, and the city requires 26 parking space. And in the Spanish Fork, this one, we will have 17,000 square feet. So, in my opinion, I thought maybe 52 is the most, so it's enough. And also during the weekend, we have all the parties. And the party is, you know, it's like, they just come, some of them drop off if they are like the elementary school. And my third one is eight years old, and always let me drop off. Mom, leave, leave. I mean, they don't, they want to play with their friends. So I think maybe three square feet is better for us.
So what's your parking, so you don't have parking issues in your other locations?
No, not at all. And also, the owner really, yeah, really help us each other. And like the next door, we have like a called a superfly, it's a fly on the air. And they said sometimes they need a specific, the spot for them, and we spend money, and we put the pole and the sign for them, and the reserve for them, only for them, and no one parking there, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I maybe add a little bit, I think, to what the applicant mentioned? I think they did a great job of kind of describing a little bit more of the background as to how we got here, and I really appreciate the research that Mary did. We don't like to invent the wheel. We're comfortable when we follow in the footsteps of what seems to have worked elsewhere, so. And looking at, I think, something more than 10 different cities and how they would define this as a use, and then what kind of requirements they would have for that use, that's where we found, particularly with parking, a pretty broad range. You know, by way of as much of a difference as going from one space for every 200 square feet, like Mary said, up to one space for every 300 square feet, and that's of building space, building square footage. And that being said, this is new to us. We don't have history. What I'm trying to say, I guess, and I don't want to really say it, is I think we're trying to really make the most educated guess that we can. By way of a land use, we feel comfortable with the idea that an indoor playground is appropriate for a development like this. It seems to be this type of a setting. Warehouse, office warehouse, kind of a development for various reasons. I think largely because of the amount of square footage that these uses need to work. I think it's very common for them to end up being located in these settings. But we took our best stab at it this morning as the Development Review Committee, and that's where, you know, as was mentioned, we have recommended that one space for every 250 square feet, that is one parking space for every 250 square feet of building space, be required for the use. I don't think we made that recommendation. I made the motion to recommend that particular ratio without a ton of conviction, at least for myself. So I think there is latitude from the DRC's recommendation, maybe to what you'd want to consider. And we welcome whatever other inputs anybody has to help us get better informed on the issue. Having the right amount of parking is a big deal. I'll mention what I mentioned earlier today again. I don't think it's going to be as big of a problem for reasons that were just mentioned, or potentially could be as big of a problem with this use being located in a development where I think they do have very complimentary operating hours. By way of one use has its peak parking demand at one time, and then, you know, maybe adjacent uses would be needing more parking at other times. We're probably more concerned in our commercial zones, like it was mentioned, where if this were located next to a couple of restaurants, and, you know, all of the uses are demanding their most parking in the evenings or weekends, similar times, that could be a problem. But I don't suspect that any of that helps much, other than to say-
It's consistent.
We're trying to get it right, I think relying heavily on the applicant's experience, and maybe this first case is warranted, and from there, if in the future we need to make an adjustment, that's something certain that could be considered as well.
Could we change the parking for this, is it light industrial zone?
That's what I want to do.
And have it be the 250 square feet in the zone where it would have these other uses? But industrial zone, we go to 300? I'd be comfortable going to 300.
We haven't done that before. We certainly could.
That's what I'm in favor. I see an exception for the industrial zone, for the reasons stated.
Can we ask where this would be? Like, can we see?
And of course, once-
Are there other, are there other neighbors already? Is this building that's already built?
That's good neighbors, right here. They can speak well to that.
Because can they have cross-parking agreements?
Yeah, you'll get to us. If you pull up the site plan again.
Give us your name.
My name is Mike Robinson.
Shows the whole project.
Yeah.
Are you with the applicants?
We're the owners of the building that they want to rent.
Okay, will you introduce yourself to us?
My name is Mike Robinson, and this is Sam Gustafson. Sam's hurt his back, so he's having to sit. We looked at it when they first came to us and said, is this a good use for us? Because we have neighbors, I mean, we have tenants in all these spaces. Is this going to be bad for our tenants? So if we made a bad decision, this really is not going to affect the city at all. Even if we made a horrible decision, it's going to affect our future tenants. Our tenants are going to get mad and move out. But we've been to their place in Bluffdale numerous times. I haven't been to the one in Royal, you know, I won't say I've been there, but I've been to their other places, and my own grandkids have been to these places, and it's never seemed to be a problem. And then like they said, they start around 4:00, 4:30, and the few people we have in there have left. It's interesting, if you look, and tenants can change, but I've got- It's interesting, if you look, and tenants can change, but I've got ten-year lease on some of it, seven-year lease. And we're taking about fifteen to twenty percent of the parking stalls in all three buildings right now. We have a hundred stalls that are never used, there it is, and, um, that are never used. And the stuff in blue is what we're planning to give them, the light blue shade. The building five to the east is not built, and the building to the north, the other two were built, oop, just disappeared. There we go, and, um,
Yeah, where, what's the location?
So this is just north of the hospital? So if you know where, if you know where Barber Welding is, right here, these are capital properties.
That's a great location.
It is a great location. And it's, there's so little traffic on that street, especially weekends, there's no traffic. Nobody's working in those places. And, and then at night, almost nobody's working from four to five on. So as we analyzed it, do we turn these people down and say, no, we, we don't want this? Because we have to make a good decision, just like you guys do. Can we make a good decision? Because if we make a bad decision, and I make all my other tenants mad, then, you know, make, get one tenant in that's happy, and get nine that are mad, that's not good business. But we've done our study, and we believe that this is a complimentary parking. There's, there's never gonna be an overlap. So we felt very comfortable with this. And, you know, it's a, it's kind of a little ways out, but with their, their, their marketing and their social media, I think in a month, this place, everybody will know it's there, and kids will come. And, um, it's easy to get in and out of. So we think, we've given them forty-eight, because that was the recommendation. If we go to one and three hundred, I think it's fifty-one. We can give them three more stalls, that, that's an easy, you know, run. But at two-fifty, it adds quite a bit. And, you know, we do have a ton of stuff on the far north, but, you know, don't really want their customers walking that far if we don't have to. You know, so there's ways around to skin the cat. But the other problem is, you know as well as I do, when a mom or dad show up and they're dropping off their four kids, they're gonna park in one of the easiest spots. So we have to be careful to protect some of our tenants on the inside. And, um, but we think that we can do that pretty easy. And as they said, and I didn't really believe this until it was about two weeks ago, I'm there with some of my grandkids, and they're having a party, and all these people are dropping their kids off and leaving. And I'm like, I wouldn't have done that, but, you know.
I would have.
So, yeah, and so when you say, oh, there's gonna be so many kids in there, and it's half of them, parents aren't there. They come and pick up their kids and go. I was a little surprised at that. I, I'll be honest, I didn't foresee that.
The hospital's nearby.
What's the worry, right?
So could there be, could there be agreement? Like, we had our other business here tonight, our other, uh, people here tonight, they have cross parking agreements. Can there be?
Well, we own all those properties. So we, we already own them all, we're not gonna sell them, so we have our own cost-
Or signage that says after four, you know, until-
We can do that easily, yes.
Five P M, this, you know, after five, you know, those kind of things.
Those things can be done pretty easy.
And then you can solve the parking problem.
Yeah, and so that was the only thing that kinda sided, got us sideways, was the recommendation, come with three-fifty. And then it was like, oh, we changed our mind, come with two-fifty. And I'd love to split the difference and say, come with three hundred.
And for just the-
Industrial.
Industrial, light industrial. Is it industrial, light industrial?
If you wanted to make that recommendation, you certainly could.
Joseph can.
Thank you, Dave.
Great.
Or Mike.
I was wondering if we could give Dave Anderson a raise.
He's a good egg.
Yeah.
He's a good guy, yeah. We've been, we've been here five, six years trying to build these.
It's really good to hear from you and to, to see what we're looking at here.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so we will go in. Well, is there any other discussion or questions for staff? We've heard from the applicant, seeing none, we'll go into public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, uh, we'll go out of public hearing. Any questions or discussion?
Uh, they've covered everything I was wondering, Mike.
Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I recommend the Planning Commission, um, I move the Planning Commission recommends approval of the Title XV amendments to the entertainment uses to the City Councils, subject to the change that it's one parking stall per three hundred square feet specifically in the industrial zone, uh, because of the complimentary uses and not, and differing peak hours of the uses in the industrial zone versus-
Light industrial.
Not, light industrial zone, and not changing the general commercial and shopping center zones, and downtown commercial zones of one per two-fifty.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That passes. Thank you.
That's so fun.
It's always fun to have new businesses come into town, and we're excited for that. Thank you. Uh, our remaining thing, uh, on our agenda tonight is a concept review of U-Haul, uh, concept.
Would the applicant like to go first, or you want staff to kinda lead into it? Uh, we've got a lot of input we can share tonight, and we just want to-
Yeah, it's too bad, it's too late.
Present it to you. Once again, a reminder, this is a concept review. And so what the applicant's really looking for is genuine feedback, so they can make a business decision as it relates to the proposed use. Um, so we'll let the applicant start, kinda lay the groundwork, and then I'll kinda bring you up to speed as far as the staff discussions and the DRC discussions as far as the proposal.
All right, well, my name is Brad Ling. I'm the president for U-Haul Company of Utah. So I, I represent most of the acquisitions and business operations for the state of Utah, as far as U-Haul goes. Um, what we're proposing here is really to figure out how to keep up with your community. So, um, as was discussed earlier, I mean, the gentleman who was really good was talking about all the condos and townhouses. I mean, he really nailed it on the head. Over the last ten years, we've seen a real shift in, in what people are able to purchase, and the size of homes that they're in. Um, and honestly, we've overwhelmed our opportunity to be able to serve your community and the communities around you with the way we've operated out of independent dealers. We overwhelm them, we overwhelm their parking lots. And our hope is to come in here and build a U-Haul center in your city. Uh, our product's a lot different, um, than, than most. And I will say, our use of the, uh, for truck and trailer rentals is already allowed in the zone that, for the property that we currently have under contract. What is, what is questionable at this point is the storage product. Um, our model of a storage product is, is not like anything that is in your code, um, nor is anything you have in town. Um, and if you don't mind, I'd be happy to share some books you guys can spread around.
Thank you.
And here-
Is this, is this the same as this?
Yes.
Okay.
You may have some argument.
Thank you, I, I'm good.
And then I included, sorry, I'm here talking. I included some photos of some existing properties that we are currently building in the state of Utah. Just so you can kinda see what our, I'm sorry, what our model looks like. Um, all of our storage units are inside an enclosed building. Uh, we, we're not offering any outside units. Uh, we do offer, uh, roughly a loading dock that where somebody can back up to on the outside, but you're literally backed up in front of a, a sliding door. This property will also include three large bays you can actually back the truck into. The intention is the customer has access to back into the building. They can close the door, when it's snowing, it's raining, the wind's blowing, it's a hundred degrees outside, we keep that climate controlled. Uh, we're really angling for an entirely different customer. I mean, these are the people who really own townhomes. They really are our neighbors. We are, I think we're really, we're trying to strive to find the neighborhoods where people are. Because the townhomes don't have sheds, they don't have big garages, or they don't have a garage. They have limited storage. Now they're four bedrooms, so that's, you know, three kids' worth of stuff or more. So they really, we offer smaller units. Our most popular units are five by ten, ten by ten. We have very limited large rooms, because that's not the neighborhood, that's not what they want. We're really just trying to store the Christmas items, the stuff that they can't keep in their home, and then it has to be accessible. So we generally talk to the women, because honestly, I'm, John, I'm, I'm just gonna pick, you, you got the most gray hair up there.
By a long ways.
By a long ways. Most of the stuff that you value in life are made out of metal, made out of wood, made out of something that probably is, by your wife's description, has to go in the garage or in the shed. So your stuff can go almost anywhere. But your wife's belongings, totally different value. And so what we're trying to do is create that kind of environment, and that's what we've got, is, is we're trying to find climate-controlled, ultra-secure, safe, secure. Your wife backs into the building, she pushes the button, the door closes, then she gets out of her car. She's got cameras, she's got all the security, every room is individually armed. And so you'll see, this, this has no application in your city. You don't have any code that really covers what we're trying to do.
So you, so it's accessible, varying sizes, indoor, climate-controlled. So you don't have any kind of storage for people's toys, like their four-wheelers and their RVs and their boats? This is not yours.
Not for this property. We, we do it in, in some places. I currently have a project getting ready to go in Moab, and that's gonna, they, they actually requesting that. So, you know, we would go for that, but this is not, that's not what we would do here. This is really for personal belongings. Uh, we don't store commercial stuff. I mean, we, maybe, we get lots of doctor's offices, uh, they like to store their files in there. We get those kind of folks that just want, you know, someplace where they can keep things secure, dry, and dust free. So my hope is, through the conversation, you can see that I'd be of value for your community, and, and you would like me to be here, because, um, your city's growing at some rate of like forty-five or fifty percent of the last ten years. Um, it doesn't look like that's going to slow down. And you can, we can see the, what's being built already in your community, and, and see that the demand's gonna be even higher for our type of product. So that's really what our hope is, and, and I'm happy to answer some questions, because I'm sure there's a bunch. Um, we do offer this product all over the place. I, the book I gave you shows things that we're building all over the United States. I did give you two properties that we currently, uh, two or three that I currently have under construction. Um, this one's in St. George. Uh, we're just getting ready to break ground on it right now. And so that's the style of, that, that they were happy with, and we, we tried to meet what their, what their design was. Uh, we have one that, uh, has already broke ground in Toilla. That's a pretty good-sized facility there. That one does have the outside units that we're talking about, where you could put, you know, larger other things in.
I have a question about that. It looks like it, it's a multi-story facility.
That one's three-story.
And so in that case, how's the other stories excessive, uh, access?
An elevator. And, and it's, um, a lot of properties, we actually have to run two elevators, depending on the footprint size.
So it looks like from, i- i- is this more or less the size that you're looking at on the property that we're talking about?
This one, this one right here is larger than what we would be putting on that property. This is a, I don't like it, eight or, eight acre, eight acre parcel or nine. Um, the, what we're looking at here is-
Seven?
Seven, and, and we have a multitude of other challenges with access onto the highway and access on the side streets. So I don't think we'll be as large of a property as, or larger buildings.
So you are also doing the rentals of the U-Haul trucks and-
There will be trucks and trailer rentals there as well.
How often are these facilities, these three-story facilities, near residences, single-family homes specifically?
If our preference, we, we try to be close to them whenever possible, because that's where our consumer base is.
Do you have a number of units that are next to single-family homes at the moment? And what are the feedback from the residences, those residences?
Well, in the state, in the state currently, what I have, obviously, um, Toilla's kind of on the very entrance of, of Toilla. The Spanish, or the, uh, St. George location is, uh, pretty far south to where the, the growth is just now coming into. Um, I, I don't know that I have one locally that is built very close. We're getting ready to do Cedar City, but it's out on the freeway.
It makes sense to me. Just, I don't know if you've checked our general plan, but this is just, uh, there's a, a smaller area that's going to be commercial, assuming we follow the general plan, which I think in this case we would. Um, but adjacent to that and surrounding it in every direction, um, the general plan calls for single-family detached homes. And I, that's what I wanted you to speak to, because that's probably my biggest concern, is the two uses marrying each other so closely.
Oh, is this Leland?
It's by that little barn.
That's Circle B.
Oh, across from Circle B?
It's, uh, the general plan to the north of that is the state density residential, and also to the, to the west, uh, west and north. But also, this bubble on the general plan, if you show, I'm already there, Byron's going there. It kind of, the bubble of the general plan kinda goes into the lot to the north for commercial, which kinda means it's a little bit subjective. It'll, we'll just decide if there's an applicant that comes with a commercial use. I would be, I think I would have less of a hesitancy if there was more of a commercial use to the north. I just don't, I don't know. My, you can see, that's my concern.
Sure, I understand.
Closest is to the other storage?
It's pretty close. It's within the next street up, the next major road up.
Quarter. I don't love the, the surgery at there either, to be honest.
Right there.
And they're currently pretty fully, I mean, they occupied up-
I do think there's a need. I, I'm not arguing that, I think you do really well at that spot, I just don't love it next to residences.
Yeah, I was super excited till I saw where it was.
We'll still be excited, it's really fun.
Well, you haven't talked to the neighbors, you haven't talked to the neighbors.
I have not. Well, we're starting with you guys, I, I'd like you to love me first.
Not you.
It's not you, yes.
What are you suggesting here?
I'm not even talking about you. I had, I had, yeah. We've sat in meetings with others of the neighbors of that area.
Yes, there were concerns on the, on the facility that's just north of there, on the corner. And, uh, the unit was built, or that, uh, development was there before the homes that went in, just in the north of there. Um, with this being commercial on all four sides of this intersection, it gives it a little bit of a, of a buffer. But from what I see here, it looks like the owner of the property did not sell the property that's around his home. It's just to the west, and he has access from the east side there down to his property.
Yeah, we would actually be purchasing his driveway, and he would have, he would have to have cross-access agreement on my property to access it.
But you don't plan on, you don't plan on acquiring his house or anything?
It's currently not on the market. I don't know how that all process worked, if he was part of the process when it turned commercial, or if he just said, I wanna keep my property, knowing it's commercial, I'm not really sure how that, the order of things, but.
And, and so, Dave, by right, they can have a, a traditional U-Haul center there right now. It's just the storage facility that's, that would need to be approved? Is that right?
Actually, it's just a concept that we're discussing.
Traditional U-Haul facility, so we would allow vehicle and trailer rentals-
Yeah, that's what I mean.
In the commercial to zone.
Where it is, by right, right now.
Yes.
It doesn't need to come before, that part doesn't need to come before.
Yep.
So this is a permitted use in that zone now?
No.
Oh.
The storage component is not allowed. So that's where this really does become a different animal. So there are two parts of what we'd love to get your input on. First of all, for example, should we create a new land use definition for this use? Indoor self-storage, or something to that effect? I think this is the- I think this is distinct from how we've currently defined self-storage space. And I think, from what I've just casually observed, it's more common to see facilities like this, indoor, climate-controlled, and all of that, not in industrial areas, just in other communities. Um, so, by way of the use, should that be accommodated somehow in our zoning code?
Title fifteen.
That's question one. Then question two, how about this location? One thing to think about with that is, this is zoned commercial two. We have a lot of sites in the city that are zoned commercial two. If what we're contemplating here is, you know, maybe being a new use, were allowed in the commercial two-zone, then it wouldn't just be limited to this location, right? So, just, we'd want to give some thought as to, you know, the bigger context of that being a change that would impact the city, community-wide. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
There's a few moving pieces there.
I'll tell you my thoughts, it doesn't help the applicant, but my thought is, had you come to me and said, "We want to add indoor climate control, controlled storage facilities to the C-two zone," I'd probably have been like, "Yeah, let's do that."
Hey, can I, can I rephrase my, my statement?
The location of this C-two, it's so small that will be forever abutting single-family homes that are larger. I don't, I don't love, and that's a three-story, climate-controlled, yeah, so, that's what I
I think my other thing is, uh, is, on the front page of this right here,
Yes.
there's a brown building, and there's your building. Is the brown building one of your buildings?
No, it's not.
That's just a neighbor.
That's just a neighbor.
Right. Your building would be, as much as it's recognizable, that's U-Haul, that's your brand. I would be more comfortable with a building that is not as
Old?
Yes. Something that is more aesthetically pleasing for a single-family estate lot, kind of, neighbors, right? Anyway, that's what I, that's my thought on that.
You know, a, a, industry where I, the, the stuff that we have was, was entertained by the cities we were in. Um, we do lots of different designs based on community desires. Um, I mean, we do stuff in, in more remote locate, you know, like up in the mountains or out in the desert. Uh, we, we actually remodeled a Kmart building down in Richfield that we purchased. Uh, and they wanted it to be very desert-y, so we have lots of oranges and browns and, and, you know, sagebrush green on that particular building because that was their desire. Uh, we, we did a Kmart in, in, uh, Price, Utah, and they wanted it bright and light, and it's red, white, and blue. Well, orange, white, and blue, but it's mostly just bright, stands out.
That's bright, that's Price for you. I love that place.
So, so we, we try to listen, and, and my job, uh, I mean, I could have just sent anybody here, I suppose, but I, I really, really run the operation here, and I don't do the drawings, as, as much as I'd like to say I was that artistic, but my job is to gather information, gather your feedback, and say, "Well, what do I need to come, come back with you with, if there's anything?" Because, we really love your community. So, you know, give you a backstory, we're only here because my CEO came for your, your airplane show they do in the middle of summer and met your mayor.
He's awesome.
And after visiting with your mayor, I got an email the following day and said, "How come we don't have a facility in this community?" I did the research, this place is amazing. And, this was about, I don't know when the last show was, September, we'll call it September. He asked for me to have property under contract by Christmas. That was his Christmas present. So, um, and my experience with your community has really been amazing. I, I, I mean, it, it sounds cliche, and I know I'm trying to, but, there's a lot going on here, and you've been very open-minded. I, I understand this is a tough property. Because, but I think that my product would be more difficult for you to swallow if I were really in some of your C-two properties more in town. Perhaps.
Well, I saw one, one of your pictures that had you along the freeway, and I thought, "That's a great place to put, to put it." But I can see what you mean, how you want to be closer to residential.
You just don't put your Christmas decorations and then have to, you know, have to drive two miles to go get it, or three?
But I think my other input on that is, if I'm thinking already, they're putting in a U-Haul center, they're, they're putting in U-Haul on that corner anyway, then, do we?
That's not what has been said, though. That's not necessarily a safe assumption, what you just said.
Oh, okay.
And to be honest with you, that's, uh, he's right. I don't want, I don't want you to get any misconception. I don't own the property. Would like to close on it, I'd like to own it. But, my component will, will have a building on it. A- and the building will have to have storage units in it because that's how we really afford the property. It's getting expensive, and it all comes with cost. And, it's a capital expenditure. This is my property in Murray, it's right on the freeway, it's gonna be amazing. We got lucky there because everything else has been gobbled up. And that's kind of what we run into, and the properties that are suitable for us, and suitable for the consumer, are disappearing at a really rapid rate. And so, we hope that this will be something that would be useful, um, for your community. And then, we've really just adopted this idea that, while we're asking you to make an exception for the storage component, it's really something that's not offered, nor is it something that's terribly visible from the street. And, and the idea is that's inside the building, and your rules already are, for this particular zone, is you can go forty-eight feet. So, if it's not me, it could be anybody. And so, I just prefer it's me because I like me, and I think you will too.
I think one thing, uh, I like the concept, and I like the idea of having that kind of a facility in the area because we don't have one. We don't have anything like that. We have other places that have storage, uh, indoor and outdoor both, climate-controlled and not. Uh, but the design here, and being able to pull into the building and all of that stuff is unique. It's, it's a good thing, but I share Joseph's concern with the residents that are around there in this particular case. Because, the zoning that's around this is for, uh, lower-density housing. And so, that kind of is, uh, is something that, uh, concerns me. Uh, the other thing that I'm not sure of as far as the city is concerned, uh, one of the things that we talk about a lot is, is that we don't have a lot of intersections similar to this in Spanish Fork left. There are just not very many intersections like that. So, that makes the places where we do have commercial planned, or, uh, commercial or industrial, planned for an intersection like that, it is a premium, you know? Uh, there's not a lot of these areas left, like I said. And so, uh, I don't know that we've really ever discussed what we, what kind of development we would like at this spot, other than just the, the zoning that we have in place now. And, uh, you know, we do have, uh, the development that's already there. We have some that's just north of here. Uh, you know, that'll be going in soon. And so, it is coming that way. And, uh, I guess the question maybe that needs to go beyond here tonight is, what, what does the city want to see there? You know, what is, what kind of development do we want? And I, I don't have the answer to that. I, the question, I think, is open-ended, and, and you may be able to help us decide what that is. Because you're here tonight asking us if, if you can, you could be able to do this, and, and I don't know that we have that answer completely tonight. But, it's a great thing that we can discuss and discuss further. So, uh, I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with just saying, "Yes, I love it and build it." I, I, I would say, you know, there are other places as it shows down here on the next intersection. There's a couple more places that are, are, uh, commercial, but those places are much too small for you. And so, then you go down further towards the freeway, and of course, things get more, I, I don't know if they'll get more expensive, but they're not available now, or they're already, they're already committed, so. I don't want to tell you how to do that or anything like that. I'm just saying, I'm not sure about how I feel about this particular spot. And, before I leave that, we do have one person here who, uh, she's not a resident down there, but has property down there. And, uh, you know, I'd like to hear from you, Jackie, about, uh, your feeling about this kind of development, knowing that this, you gotta, you gotta know, Jackie, that this is zoned commercial for, so something will go there.
I give you that, but also, I think we're also zoned rural residential at the same time. I don't hate it. I don't love it either. I'm waiting for Brian to give me a call to see how he feels about, since it is his neighbor. I don't like the aesthetic of the building similar to what you said. That's my, you're gonna be coming up the hills, that what you want to see right there on the hill, because that's gonna draw a lot of attention. The three stories where it's sitting up next to the other side, I, can it be set back further from that, so it gives us more that?
Which is interesting because in our first meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, Brandon, I don't, I don't remember who brought it up, but somebody really asked, and we said, "Your buildings are," and you didn't get to see my other buildings, and you're welcome to take one of these, but, um, my other buildings are all varied, but they, they bring it up, "Your buildings are really pretty. How come you're not out by the road?" And we were like, "Because sometimes you don't want us by the road." Uh, we, we just, we just did what we do. But, the interesting thing is that St. George location, if you go back one, uh, next one, that one right there is actually up against two corners of a road because the parking is all behind the building. Uh, because in that particular community, they said, "Well, we'd rather see your building. We don't really want to see the trucks. So, let's move the building." So, we flopped the building to the other side.
And you could do that here?
Sure. Yeah, there's plenty of room for it.
So, then if you go back to also the, just one first picture, that was, that's really shiny, sorry. The two access points onto the highway there, that's scary to me. Is that, that road's not very safe. I mean, you're gonna have them really close to that intersection there, but still coming off the hill, there people go flying. That's one thing to consider.
Staff, is that, uh, Mill Road must be, is it planned to be widened, I hope?
Yeah.
And so, if we have something that develops there, we'll definitely widen the road and make it, uh,
That was brought up in DRC. We, we would rather, um, access off Mill Road than SR seventy-one sixty-four.
We actually have a new plan underway, um, because we took that advice from two weeks ago, and, and we, we actually, I didn't have it quite ready, but, we actually show an access off of Mill Road instead, because you're right, it's way too close.
Yeah, and some, like, if you're talking about having trucks and trailers come onto that, someone who has pulled trucks and trailers out onto that road,
Yeah, and, and we realized that, we, you know, we looked back at it, like, well, we weren't very smart there, so, we actually have a new drawing, and we did, we did start working on moving the building out to the road to see how that would fit, and, and it's doable.
I'm curious, why is your storm basin there, and what's the other blank green spot?
And that will, that will, I think that our plan, the incorporate's moving it to the
That's a tough intersection.
After school. Passing the other side.
Okay. No, but thank you for asking me, I really appreciate that.
I, uh, if this were to go in, in my personal opinion, I would rather see the building close to the road with the other stuff back, because I think it'd be less objectionable to the neighbors that are already built on the east side of Mill Road. Uh, a thirty-foot-high, say for instance, or forty-foot-high structure would impact their visual, uh,
Their view.
Their view of the valley, so I'd rather move that towards the road, where there'll be more commercial on that east side. So, I would prefer that. I, I, I like the concept, I like the business, I think it's a good thing to do. And I think that if we could wade through the things, and I think that, uh, there may be a need to talk to some of the residents there. I, I share Jo- Joseph's concern. That, uh, the, the zoning now there is for low-density housing and bigger lots, and stuff like that, but, uh, that kind of stuff can be mitigated as well, so. Anyway, I, I, I don't have a lot of other, anybody else have?
Well, so, my understanding is we were posed two questions. One, do we like the business concept? I feel like the consensus is that we do like the business concept, and it's something we'd like to see in the city. Um, the second question was, should, is this the right location, and then there'd be some kind of rezoning exceptions made? And it sounds like we're all in consensus as well that we're not sure. Right?
I think you're absolutely right.
And then, I just would like to make a design comment. Um, I love that Houston building that you feature on the front page. I mean, that is a very attractive.
I'm gonna write Houston down right here.
Com- compared to the more desert one.
I think that's one thing that, uh, this commission has been high on, is having buildings that look less industrial, less institutionalized, and more community-friendly.
Sure.
And, something that's just visible, and maybe two or three stories, I think that that would be something, you know, how attractive that business is. This isn't on the freeway, this isn't in a completely industrial zone. So, because of that, you know, you'd want it to fit in with the surrounding area. And, uh, it, it, it's like, uh, Ms. Larson said, you know, right now, there's, everything that's around this is ag. But, it's agricultural, uh, and zoned that way right now, but, uh, you know, we know the way that things, you may.
Well, but there, but it's the neighbors to the east that
Those are the ones that I'm concerned about now because they are there.
Yeah.
I think Joseph.
And they aren't, they aren't agricultural, they're estate-density homes.
Yes. And those are the homes that we're thinking about right there, uh, as we look at that. And by the way, the ones that are, that are on the east side of that have more elevation than they'll see over the top of this anyway. Uh, so, in that regard, you know, we, we don't have a lot of problem, but that that's just off of Mill Road is nearly the same elevation, so. Whatever is there, and it, you know, and, and it's commercial, it's, you know, it's zoned for something to be there, eventually. Whether it's this, or whether it's something else, it will not be low-density housing. Unless we, I guess that the city council could change that as well, but right now, in the master plan, that is not the plan for that intersection. So. And I, you know, I, I appreciate that, uh, the gentleman you represent thinks highly enough of Spanish Fork to want to be here. You know, if, if that is something that, uh, that, that your boss likes, you know, we put a lot of, we put a lot of, uh, emphasis on that, you know? We want people to come here and be proud of where you live, and where you, and where you do business, and be a part of the community. I think that, uh, we're not as happy with people who plan on coming in and building something and then moving to Park City.
What do you have against Park City, John?
Yeah.
Now's a great time, you can tell us about it.
Yeah, I do.
I have my paper, I can take notes.
But, you know what I mean. In other words, uh, when someone wants to come to the community, we like to hear that they're going to be a part of the community.
Well, it made an impact.
Join with us in what we do in Spanish.
He made an impact, and, and it wasn't just that, because my CEO is a little eccentric and a little over-the-top. I mean, he doesn't do anything a little bit. Um, it's family-owned company, and, and his dad was the one that started the company seventy-six years ago. But, I gave him a piece of property in Salem, and I just got a polite email back, "That's not what I asked you to do." And so, I'm, I'm here because I, I follow direction, and we, we don't go away. Um, my CEO does not sell property, we own it forever. That's just his motto, it's family, and he, he intends in turning it over to his children at some point, so.
I think that that's a good reason to move, uh, the building closer to the road, and have, uh, not only on the state highway there, but Mill Road, it would be not It would be nice to have a good frontage on both sides that looks good. We ask that of, of, uh, other storage facilities, that they look good from, from the road and that they're not something that you drive by going, huh, hell, what's that?
Well, or just that they, or just that you're like, oh, there it is.
Yeah.
So down on the Salem side, just around the curve there, Kurt has started another kind of storage. For like, for boats or RVs or kind of things like that. So yeah, you do have those on both sides. Um, however, where you have the Voorhees across the street and their slaughterhouse, I can't think of a better neighbor that you would want to have to a slaughterhouse than something like him. Because they're not going to probably try to push them out. So that's kind of.
Good comment.
Thank you.
Anything else that we should be discussing with the applicant? Well, soon to be applicant, maybe. Is there, is there something we've left unturned? A stone we've left unturned?
I don't think we have gotten clear direction at all. So maybe just to talk a little bit about where this goes from here.
My comments haven't changed. You got, you got my comments.
I appreciate that, but, um, I'm gonna press a little bit to try to make sure that we're, we're taking a next step that's gonna be productive. Um, it's easy for us to come up with language. That's not hard. But before, um, the zoning text gets amended to allow this use at this location, if we follow our typical protocol, and I think we probably would want to, the applicant's gonna have to spend quite a bit of money on design and engineering so that that text change syncs up with a design that you guys want. And we've talked, you know, already, you know, there are lots of different ways to approach building orientation and location and exterior materials and height and everything like that. Uh, the most appropriate time to get that all buttoned up tight is when you have a plan right in front of you along with something like a zoning text amendment. So I, based on what I would say is a lukewarm reception, from what I've heard, I, I would have a hard time being really gung-ho about telling the applicant to take the next step and to make that investment in this site. So that's my read on what I've heard and the conversation seems to have evolved a little bit.
City council may totally disagree.
And the city council may totally disagree.
They're the actual decision makers.
But I would say this, that for tonight, you are the city. We're here looking to get direction from you. So, and I, hey, if you're literally on the fence, um, we appreciate that honesty as well. But if you can help us and help the applicant decide, ultimately it's their decision. Uh, we, again, we try to be sensitive to, to, uh, the demands that the process places on them, so.
Okay, I have three things to say then. Three feedbacks. Number one is, we want your product in our city. Or I, one of the commissioners, I think the product is awesome. My second feedback is, I would love it not in that location. I, if I were thinking of something, I would think along Highway six is a better location. I don't know where there's property on Highway six.
We looked. We looked into.
Um, number three is, if it, if it would go in this particular, I mean, obviously you hit a nerve with that location. Um, but I think the aesthetic, uh, I would, I'd be more comfortable with the aesthetic being different to.
That's the easiest part of the whole thing we've covered here tonight.
Phew.
I, I will say for me, I, I like the product. I'd like it in Spanish Fork. I worried about if you can change the concept look, we can worry about that later, but I am worried about where it's at. But I also, a business in Spanish Fork trying to find a spot, it's near impossible to find a spot right now. So I get it.
And, and my challenge, I'm really sorry. My challenge would be is, is one, I'm not really gonna go away, you guys. I'll come back with something because I, I'm too committed. And now I love your city. I actually thought as I was driving down here, I thought, man, I really like this place. Your, your library was amazing, but.
Move here. We'd, we'd welcome you.
I really thought, we live in South Jordan. My wife hates it there.
See? Come to Spanish Fork.
She's like, can we just go live someplace like it's in the country?
Spanish Fork.
Acres do you need?
Hmm?
How many acres do you need for the park?
Hmm, five, six. It's probably on the minimum side. We don't really want more than seven generally. So.
I'm scanning the city in my head.
You do that. So the problem, and I'll be honest with you, if, I guess the reality will be is, I really, you'll be, you'll be hard-pressed to find me come back to you with property that's already industrial. I'm, I'm just not going to do it because then I won't meet our objective and I won't suit the, the consumer that is out there. And we probably just won't want to build there unless it's really just the remote perfect thing that by accident was industrial. I know that I spoke with your mayor and he kind of directed me to your, your part on the other side of the freeway, but the problem is, is some of that's, it's very accessible to a semi-truck, not super accessible to the people who really reside here.
Use it.
And so I, I, if, if this doesn't work, I keep coming back, but I'm gonna keep coming back probably at a commercial property and, and we're gonna still be talking about, uh, so at some point, I don't want you to forget the fact that I'm chill, I'm still trying to get, to allow my storage use in, in the way we apply it because I think at the end of the day, I have to bring you commercial property. I haven't found any, except for this one that really worked for us. But I will tell you that at least from the brokers that I've been working with, they've struggled to sell this property to real commu, the other type of commercial users because the commercial product's not out there yet. And, and so they're like, oh, but it's not really in town and I'm not really sure if we see that. And so that's what kind of attracted us to it because they'd had very few bites on the property for that kind of use. Because, you know, I, and I, I know that there's some commercial stuff happening out to the freeway at eight thousand, whatever that exit is. But in between, it's still very, it's not feeling like I want to run to the grocery store. And I think that's where the challenge was and that's what kind of we thought, we knew when we walked in, it's like, ah, this one's probably gonna be hard because that's a beautiful house next door. But it's next to a commercial property. I mean, at some point he had to know that and I think he's a regi, I don't think he's the original owner of it, so. Um.
His wife.
So those, those are my, those are my statements and I don't, I don't really know beyond that, other than.
Oh, by the neighborhood Walmart, like behind the Holiday Oil or.
That's what I was thinking as well.
Right.
On Highway six.
Right.
To your point.
Right. Sorry?
If it's still, if not him, like with you all, after what type of commercial?
Right. That's the thing I'm wondering too, is if not him, then who?
Quick Quack. I guess that's why, that's one of the reasons that I'm attracted to this, this.
Credit you need too soon, Brandon, too soon. Great location for financials.
That's one of the reasons that I am attracted to this particular thing is, is that we have someone who is interested in the property and is apparently willing to work with us in every way possible to make this something that it'll be, that'll be a good product for that area. Uh, the next one that comes in may not be as, as good. Uh, you know, if it were just a storage facility, I don't know that we could stop it, right?
Absolutely, you'd stop it. It wouldn't get off first base. It wouldn't get out of the batter's box because that is not allowed.
In that zone. You're right.
The truck rental is allowed.
Yes, but the storage.
Is not.
Right. But what I'm saying is, is that if it was just this, just, well.
It could be worse.
Yeah, the next, the next, the next applicant that comes in and wants to build on that property, we may not have someone that is as interested and agreeable to what we have been saying about this property. It's a little bit like you can deal with the devil you know or the devil you don't know.
He's not a devil.
And, and, and I, you know, I don't think, I don't think that's the first time he's been referred to as a devil. But you know what I'm saying?
I think it's worth invest, investing some time and energy into it.
At this location?
Uh.
It's all about this location next. I think so. I mean, by way of here's, I mean, and I'm, I certainly don't want to be disrespectful at all, just to try to, um, summarize what I think we're hearing. And I'm gonna note that forty minutes ago, I felt like the conversation was not here.
Yeah.
I feel like the sentiments have evolved to where now maybe the majority of the commissioners that are here tonight, fairness, are sympathetic to the idea of it being here, which, um, I appreciate that message or whatever message we get tonight. Um, is that fair to say? So by way of.
Yes.
And I, I think Mr. Ling, I appreciate him, you know, reiterating his commitment to the city and the site. So like he's ready to go full speed ahead and we can certainly do that.
I think, I think that I would like to see, uh, the, uh, city council give this a shot as well as to, as to what the vision is for this area. And, uh, because eventually they will be the ones that make the decision on this. Uh, especially, well, there's hoops to be jumped through before we get there.
I think we all understand. I, I agree with John. Well. For the applicant's sake, I think he should do the same thing with city council.
I really do.
The exact same thing.
As a concept.
Nice people. You're a nice person. It'll be a conversation. It'll be great. That's what I think you should do. And it, it may not happen in this format and forum.
It could be in another forum because it's a con, it's a concept.
I, honestly, I think council members will say, what did the planning commission say? Well, you know what I said. I've been very clear. That will be an, an important part of the conversation, which I value.
And I personally, I mean, I understand where you're.
I'm not against it. I just, I'm trying to give you clear feedback.
Well, and, and honestly, I don't, I, the one thing I do disagree with you on is I think that a facility down by the freeway is, would be great. I understand where you're coming from though, and I, so I don't, and I don't have the experience, but that's.
Maybe just a little more context on that thought. I completely agree. And I think development around the freeway will backfill in such a way that in time, the things that, you know, you described as being kind of characteristics of the surroundings that you'd like to see, they'll be there. But as, as proximate as this site is to the interchange, for example, properties closer to the interchange are not as ready to be developed as this one. So this use probably can't be built in the next couple of years until some other things happen out by the interchange as a standalone project. So timing probably is part of the issue there.
Well, and I expected to see it one of three places. One is along the industrial area, along the freeway or near where we just, um, gave the feedback for the, or where we just approved the play, place or along Highway six, kind of up by where like the Holiday Oil and the Small Mart is.
What is the zoning, uh, up near the Quick Quack on Highway six that, uh, is?
Well, yeah.
Is it zoned for that open, uh, hayfield? Is that commercial? Is it industrial?
It's zoned.
Mixed use? What is it?
Zoned resident, real residential. It's mixed use on the general plan, could be zoned identical to what we're talking about here, could be, without changing the general plan.
More homes there than there are here. You know, and you got, uh, you got the access there. People could wash their car at Quick Quack. The city has that, uh, substation right there, right?
That would require another legislative hoop. That would be a zoning map amendment.
Those houses are not, that's why I didn't recommend that spot.
We have some experience.
That neighborhood is gonna be tough.
Well, yeah, they objected to, uh, Holiday Oil and everything else, so.
And the car wash.
And the car wash.
So my idea is to think about who owns what, whose.
All of them.
Would you do that there or gas station or something? You know what I mean?
Christians are wanting to develop the Williams Ground on the north end of town.
It's not climate control though. You're, you're.
True. Okay.
You, you're, the demand is gonna be there. Very, very strong.
But if you were to move to up in the industrial part-ish closer to where, I mean, if the Christians are wanting to develop in the north end, you can do that. Unless, I don't know. I'm just.
All right.
I've heard make a run at it.
Make a run at it.
Counting rights. It's because they're, I don't, okay. I go back to.
But I, I think it deserves the consideration.
City council. So.
And I think these, I think that.
I think if you give the city council feedback and get their, their feedback on our feedback, I really think that they'll say.
Bring donuts next time is what she's saying.
I was just gonna go ahead and say, those guys over there really liked me.
I know they like you, but they, if they knew that location, they too would have, they have the same trauma I do from the conversation of the neigh, with the neighbors on other developments close by.
And I think for me, one thing that John said, it kind of changed the way I was thinking is, something's going there. We have somebody here to, willing to work with us how we want it. That might be better than what could come there.
Yeah.
And it's not Trader Joe's. You know, they're not the ones in second position here.
You, you know me, I'm still looking for, you promised me a Buc-E's. I'm still waiting for Buc-E's.
No Trader Joe's. I have another place for Trader Joe's.
I, we appreciate that. I hope this is helpful.
Joseph might find you another prime location.
He might. I, I really appreciate the challenge and he feels like he's won because he, he's pretty honest with me and he smiled while he was doing it, so.
We love continued conversations, so thank you. Come to Spanish Fork.
You will. I don't think I have a choice.
Doesn't sound like it.
I'm gonna have to move here until it happens.
There's no plane, there's no airplane hangar in that development though that you're proposing.
He did actually say that your airplane hangars were amazing and I bet he flies his plane in here more often.
That's good. During planes, trains and automobiles.
He loves planes, has planes and so that's what drew him here. That's how it all happened. You guys just, uh, one way or the other, we can get a U-Haul facility. It kills me.
Thank you.
It won't kill you.
Won't kill you.
Um, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
We have a motion to adjourn? A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.